We have a list of fifteen, twenty meeting minutes that are on the table. Do either of you need any more time to review these? Are you comfortable putting on a motion? What is your thoughts?
I haven't looked at them yet. Anything that came in email, have you? Were those all in email?
Those were sent just as a block in a folder with all the outstanding ones.
In the email?
In the email.
Yeah, okay, then, okay. Those I see, that's fine.
I had a chance to look through them this morning. They looked over everything, looked accurate as I recollected. Some of them go back quite a ways.
All right, then. Do we have a motion to accept the non-executive session meeting minutes? Please review the agenda for the future meeting minutes. We have a lot of them by date, so I do not want to read every one of them as reading them will not make a big difference to your knowledge of what happened that day. They go from 2017 to 2019 presently, so we're catching up on some missed meeting minutes.
Almost thirty of them.
Yeah. So if you have any questions on which specific meeting minutes are getting approved in the motion, please refer to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, non-executive session, as we have them listed on our agenda.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. We also have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, eleven executive session minutes to be approved and released. Do we have a motion for that?
Good portion of these, I'm not involved, and so I'll abstain from these.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion on those?
Yeah, I'll make a motion if we approve the executive session minutes commencing on June 26, 2018 through January 22, 2019, as list, as listed on the collectments warrant.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? General topics regarding police discussions, some stuff with the Marshall-Langeliere case, as well as some firefighter stuff, much of it mostly personnel or contract-related discussions. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. We also have an executive session minutes not to be released for October 29, 2018, exemption one, and January 22, 2019 regarding fire chief. I'd make a motion that we accept these but not for release until the items are closed.
Okay, I will second that.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Any public comments?
Lions Club is doing the car show.
Yes.
Our annual car show. This time it's going to be for the Anne-Marie Cancer Fund.
Okay.
And we'd like to do the same as what we've done in previous years.
Okay.
And Sandy has all the paperwork, board.
Okay. And that's September 7?
September 7.
Okay. You guys have any questions on it?
Nope.
Okay. Nice. Because it wasn't on the agenda, I just recommended that they bring it up because they're here. We can have any questions answered if we had them. If not, we'll put it back on the agenda at the next meeting to make the official vote so that it's just clear to anybody that may have had questions that didn't show up. As usual, review with the police, make sure the street closings and all that work fine. Again, I don't expect them to say we've got to change it, but I leave that to the police chief to identify if anything needs to be changed. Do you have any other questions?
Nope.
All right. So...
We've just got to put the vote off to the next meeting because it wasn't posted, so no one else had a chance to come in and speak if they wanted to, so we just have to put it off.
It should be fine, but if for some reason at the next meeting someone does come in with...
Public comment.
We'll make sure we pass those on to you, just so if we need to clear something up, we can. But I expect the next agenda item to just be a vote and a pass and accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming again.
And... For doing it.
I appreciate these events, so thank you much for organizing them, as well as the charities that you work towards on this.
Yeah, this time more than ever is needed, so that's why we're doing the Anne-Marie Cancer Fund.
Okay.
Everybody's affected, we cancel one, we're in the other.
Yeah. Greatly appreciated. So it's, the $10 entry fee is for...
For the car.
For the car.
For the public is free.
Okay.
Do you want to read the, read the brochure for people so they know exactly what it is?
I'll just... Benefit the Anne-Marie Cancer Fund, where at the Berry Mascom in September 7, starting at 9:00 in the morning, breakfast at 8:00 a.m. at the Congregational Church, Berry Common, rain or shine, no rain date, refreshments, food and beverages will be available, raffles, 50-50 raffle, $10 entry fee per car, trophies for the top 10 will be awarded by, well, at 2:00 p.m., and some contact numbers were provided for Sal, Chris, and Stanley, who are spearheading the coordination apparently.
Correct.
So...
Do we have one of these posted on the town board, any place in the building? Can we do that?
We can do that.
So post one here.
Please. Thank you very much. We'll get you to the office.
Thank you. All right, enjoy. Thank you.
We'll keep posting them.
See, we don't sell the food. We have everybody in town gets involved, Berry Pizza does something special, Becky's Bistro, it gives back to the community.
Nice.
Instead of us bringing, you know, the Lions Club trail and this and that, it's more important.
It's a community, it's a community.
Give everybody else the opportunity to participate, benefit. I appreciate that approach.
Been saying for two years, that's what I'd like to see, more events in the common, more participation from people, more people involved in our town. So I like, I like, I like stuff like this. I like the events going down at Felton Field with having 4-H come in and things, and I think it's good steps for us.
These are, we look forward to it. So if you stop, we're all going to be upset. But understood. So thanks a lot, Sal. With that, anybody else with a public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the agenda items. Old business, discussion on solar developments for the town. I know Andrew's been kind of doing a lot of the legwork behind the scenes for us, so I'll give you...
Yeah, just continuing working to see what the viability is for bringing, they're doing some sort of town solar development, whether or not that's, you know, us developing it or leasing property. I know virtually we're looking at Town Farm Road, but it seems that there's, there might be some environmental concerns at that location that might be prohibitive as far as moving forward, so currently in the process of evaluating what tax title properties we have coming on the rules and see if there's any of those that are viable. The biggest downside that I'm following is that most of them fall on, any, any land that seems to be viable is falling on roads that are designated as scenic roads, so that could be an inhibitor as well. So, you know, it's not a lot to choose from, but just doing the rebuild is to see what's out there as far as land that could be leased for solar development.
I'm just curious for those sites on the scenic road, maybe we should reach out to the planning board and see if there's certain criteria they might consider if it creates a proper visual barrier or something like that.
Yeah.
What that type of visual barrier could be. It could be an earth berm with vegetation on it, so it's literally, you have to climb the berm in order to see the solar behind it, but I would leave that up to a little of their input, so we would know if it's something we want to throw into an RFP.
Yeah, the tax title property that I was able to identify that could be a possibility did have a significant vegetative buffer from anything around it and was set back substantially from the road, so it could be, it could still be viable. I'd like to sit down with the planning board though and see what their thoughts are on it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Do you guys have any other thoughts on that or comments at this time?
No. I'm anxious to look into it, and I had a talk with Mr. Lipscomb about solar in general, and he's indicated that he thinks there's potential for a good deal of money, revenue from rental properties, not like we saw with the money at the landfill, the transit station, not the transit, DPW with the...
The tipping fees thing?
No, no, the, oh, we looked at the solar for the DPW land and...
When they talked about adding that ground array thing that...
Right, and it was going to benefit us something like $1,000 in savings a month, which is really trivial. This, this sounds like it could be tens of thousands of dollars a month to lease some land, so very interested to see sooner than later where it goes.
Okay.
So if we can, you know, identify something, keep this on the agenda, keep on top of this, it'd be nice to be able to identify something before this opportunity dries up.
Sounds good.
And it will dry up.
And we might want to look at whether the RFP could include multiple parcels as options because it may help us better with bidders, et cetera. Yes, sir?
I had, I'd been passing out some articles on solar to you a couple of meetings ago and to Andrew, et cetera, and I think I was reading one of them or two of them, there are some, some organizations that focus on land such as Town Farm Road where you, you just mentioned that maybe have some environmental concerns, and I would hate to have the, I would hate the town to miss the opportunity by not researching or maybe having an expert come in, a paid, a paid expert, come in and make some sort of evaluation, because the solar rules and income are decreasing gradually, and they have for several years. And there may be, there may be a time, remember in the 2012, we received a letter from, I forget his name, but he lives near Town Farm Road, and he talked about solar, and that was a wonderful opportunity to think about it then. So we've been thinking about it for six years, and I would hate to be involved in a town where everybody says, "Well, I'm sorry, we didn't act fast enough." So everybody is saying that there's going to be an end to solar at some time. I think we need to work, instead of just occasionally, I think we need, the board needs to focus on, with the town administrator, and try to make this thing happen as quickly as possible, because we've been talking about it for many months at the meeting, because I've brought it up like, like I'm doing now for many months, and we never seem to get past a certain point. We're always talking to more committees and thinking about it and doing this. Several weeks ago, I asked, and I was refused by you, Charlie, is that I asked to have some sort of a committee to focus on this, or bring in an expert, or do something, because we, by talking and pontificating like you guys are doing and the town's doing, we may lose a very important asset, and that is the ability to use the sun. And when that's gone, we don't have any other possibility of any income coming in other than raising taxes. And taxes are not something that is generally raised, is that sometimes they go down and sometimes they go up. If anybody here has the impression that taxes generally go up, I think you're sitting in the wrong seat, and because I think we need select people who, who think or believe that taxes could come down as well, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on solar? Okay. Move on to the next update on Police Department Operations, Chief Carbone, please. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? Good. How are you? Okay. So this is, it's a lot of information, so I'll try to go through it quick. Stop me if you have any questions. The first news is the bad news, and that is that we are in a 100% expenditure of our overtime budget. The good news is, we realized, and I told you back in August, we expended 50%, and then we changed some things that we were doing. We had broken up the overtime budget in the way that it used to be. It used to be one big lump of cash that, you know, we had salaries, overtime, it all lumped in. We broke it apart this year so we could watch the different expenditures, and so we caught that sooner than we would have caught it if it had just been in the big pot. So we still have other overtime money amounting to about $30,000, which is in our part-time and the contractual obligations for things like holiday pay, that we have to pay them overtime. So we're not out of money. We also have, so, but what's contributing to this is we are down four officers, right? We had three officers leave, and then we decided at that time we were going to replace, two, three full-time officers leave, we know all the stories, and then we decided we would replace two and save one for July 1st, so that we would save that salary money towards the overtime, which is still the plan. We hired an officer who's put himself into the academy, so we don't have to pay the academy expense, and he bought most of his uniform because he was part-time. We hired him in the academy, so we're paying him now, we're not running him on shifts, but that was a big savings, and the idea there would be, was him to get hired by somebody else, and we, it's a huge savings for us. Then we hired an officer who's part-time in another town to be full-time, and he went right into our schedule, and he was going to only need very little training. The downside is, he was working for a week and he fell on the ice and he hurt himself, and now he's out, and we're waiting to find out if he's going to be out for four months or another four days. He hasn't had his follow-up doctor's appointment, so we're waiting to see. Worst-case scenario, he's out for four months, all right, that hurts us, because we have another officer going to the academy in March, we're five below numbers, so how are we dealing with that? We have some money, you know, for the, the part-time money is so far really helpless. We have two new part-time officers, they are currently training, but they can fulfill part of our shift obligation, even though they're training, they're there, right? So we have that. We have switched our scheduling, where as soon as the officer goes into the academy, we have two in the academy, we will have, we'll go to the five-two option for the remaining full-time officers, which will allow us to control certain aspects of the overtime budget, and then the idea is we'd like to take at least one of our part-timers is going to be trained enough to work on their own, so we're working on that. So that will stay in effect. If the other, if our injured officer doesn't come back, that will stay in effect until he comes back. Then the good news is, the guys that are in the academy are under those three-year contracts, so we're not worried about them coming back, leaving their, their three-year obligation doesn't even kick in till after they come off of their field training. So they come out of the academy, finish their field training, and then starts day one, three-year obligation, and we have almost half of our department now under those contracts. So the idea is, we're planning for the future, and as of July 15th or so, we'll have all of our guys out of the academy, and that will be behind us. So since where we are right now, and again, we have the two new part-timers, and we could stand to hire another two part-timers, and we have applications that come in every week, so we don't know if we're going to pick up, pick up another one, and that'll help us even more. So that's, that's where we're at money-wise, but given that we have all of this overtime because of the guys that are out or in the academy, we expect, you know, we're probably going to end up over budget. We don't know how much saving that one salary is going to help us, but I can, I can imagine we're at least somewhat over it. I don't see there's anything, any way around it. We're trying to keep it as small a number as possible, and I think, as we sit down and talk about this pretty regularly, we're doing a pretty good job. Let's see. So now we'll move on to equipment, so the...
Just regarding that, within your existing budget, whether different line items move back and forth, how far do you think you're going to go before you may have to come before the board to see if there's something outside your own department that you're going to need money from?
Another two months, we should know. We spent $50,000 in overtime this year, we have about $32,000 left in those other accounts to put towards it, plus the money we're saving off of the salary that we're not paying. We don't know how, that, how close that's going to get us, but...
Okay.
And really, a lot of it depends on whether the officer...
Mid-April, right now, we're hoping.
Yes, so we, yes, so we're thinking if that, if the officer that's injured is only lightly injured, well, then we're going to have a much better forecast, so...
Thank you.
So now, equipment. The town approved the warrant for the tasers, so we made our first payment on the tasers, the first payment was $5,000, it's $5,000 a year for five years, and I'm actually carrying one of the new tasers, so they've come in, and we've had, the deputy chief is trained as a, an instructor, and they gave us the, we hosted the class, therefore his training was free, so that was a fantastic deal. We have the tasers in, there's a couple of parts that are still coming, some carrying cases, but, and so he's training each officer as they come on duty, so we have to pay them overtime to train for the familiarization course for the tasers, like I was trained today, and Staff Sergeant Brown, so they're out there, which is, it couldn't have been a better time, because the tasers we have, we had another one break. So what we have left over is, you know, cobbled together, so this is, this is very welcome, so they're in. Our new cruiser is the Silverado, which took forever to get because of all the issues that Chevrolet's having with building and moving their plants back in, you know, from Mexico. That was a real slowdown, and everybody was put, you know, we had a real delay. He came in, and it's now a bit dug-in vehicle, being outfitted, and he tells us that we should see it on the road in three weeks, so...
Okay, good.
We, we're good there. And, you know, having seen the vehicle, I think that it's going to be the perfect fit. I mean, getting a pickup truck is going to be the perfect fit for, for what we need, especially in the wear. Bulletproof vests, so this is interesting, it's going to sound like bad news, but it's good news. Bulletproof vests are good for five years, so each new officer gets a new vest. Vests have to be by the, according to the federal mandate, when you get federal grant money, it has to be one vest, one guy, it has to be tailor-fit. And so guy comes in, part-time or full-time, we get him a vest. We send that money in, we send the receipt into the federal government, and as long as it meets the specifications, which of course they do, they give us half the money back. Takes about four months, the money comes back, and it goes in, back into our account via finance. So there's also a Massachusetts matching grant. So I found out about that, and we, we get to go back to as far as March of 2017 and ask for all the best money we've spent going back that far, because that, we're under a five-year Massachusetts grant, so it's good for that five-year period. So I've sent the paperwork in, they don't expect to put out payments again until September because they have it, it comes in parts, you know, they, they spend it in parts, first come, first served. They say that because we, the qualification is, as long as you get the federal money, then Massachusetts will match it. So that basically means our vests are going to start coming in for free, but we're not going to see our first payment for the vest that we've already bought, which is like seven or eight vests, it's, that's a three-plus thousand dollars. We may not see that until September, but they say that the money might come in in April, so we don't know which one it's going to be, but we sent the paperwork in, we've got, we've registered for it. So at the same time, we have, because vests are good for five years, and we keep track of that, my vest expires in November, two of the officers on duty there, their vests expire now, so we have to buy them new vests, and we have our two part-time, so that's either four or five vests we purchase, knowing we're going to see 50% of the money from the federal government, believing we're going to see the rest of it from the state, but if we have to spend it in this fiscal year, it may not come in until July, and it may not come in until September. So we have to buy that, and we don't have the money for that, and we're going to, we're going to overextend, extend our supply budget, but all that money's coming back, and it'll be free. So unless the state frees up their funds in April, then we'll break even, because we'll be getting as much back from the state as we're spending on the new vests.
How much are we having to spend upfront for this period of time? This overrun amount, actually, not the total amount.
It's 900 vests times four.
Okay.
So the, so we, we've had to make that order. We, we are obligated to put the two guys that have the expired vests in this, we're obligated to put the two part-timers in. There's no getting around it, I'm just saying that the federal government's a little bit slower than the state government does, and I've seen the money come back in a couple of months, and I've seen it come back in twice that time. You really can't judge when it's coming back, but it is going to come back.
Usually within a year of submitting your application.
It's way, it's what happens, is every year you submit another grant request, so we have two grant requests right now in their funding. So the, the town of Berry has all the money already pre-allocated for this and another seven or eight vests, and then in another few months, we'll put in another one, because we're going to run out of the one we've been in two years ago. So the money's there, it's allocated for us, we've sent in all of the forms, it's just getting through the paperwork on their end.
I got you. I just want to make sure that the, again, we've got to be careful about overrunning a line item that may have been on the warrant that the town approved. We can't just do that, so we need to make sure we have things in place that cover it before we overrun it.
Right. So, well, so I, I tell you that we had no choice but to buy them. We didn't anticipate having to buy so many vests, we anticipated having to buy the two, but three people leave, and there's three vests we didn't see come, so at any rate, we don't know whether the money's just going to come right back before July 1st and everything will be fine, or if we're going to have to look through other...
And that's why I'm just saying, if it comes down to it, you may have to go before the finance committee and get approval to use some of that money, and if it comes back within this fiscal year, maybe the point is it goes back into the account you take it from, not necessarily back into your account.
All right, so I, then my next move is going to be to go to that, because I have to make these orders pretty soon, just because guys have to have them.
Understood. But that's what I, my understanding is that's the procedure we have to follow, so let's just do that, and that way the finance committee plays their role.
I would suggest, I would suggest the agreement we have for the new hires, that if they leave soon, that they, they repay their training, that we include their vest cost in that, because that's not recoverable.
I, so by federal grant, we keep the, we, we keep...
Does us no good if we can't use it for somebody else.
No, we keep vests that are close to, what you say is a good point, because we keep vests that are close to expiration, but we have to let the new vests go with, you know, like a new vest, we have to let it go with the guy. So I'll bet you, under our current agreement, we can still enforce that, because...
We should, because that's something we can recover in the future.
Does it cover the uniform costs? Initial startup uniform costs?
It's all costs of training, so maybe we, maybe, maybe it's something we need to add that I...
We're going to have to look at our investments in total in that agreement, but in the, in the future, I know it's only, you're two years in here.
Right.
These are kind of things you have to try to, start anticipating, like we've already discussed vehicles and getting them in the budget, and try to look at all the things that might come up like this.
Right.
Unforeseen, they, they need to be foreseen.
Right. Last part, we've lost only one vest that way.
Okay.
Because guys that were, have left, have left with vests that had like eight months left.
But as far as renewal of the vests, they shouldn't come as a surprise for our budget now, this is something that, because you're new enough here that you, maybe you didn't have the whole records on them, we need to start knowing when those things are coming, pre-plan for purchases, even if it's a capital purchase, if we have enough, we need to not be hit with these mid-budget year.
We have, we have a, we have a tracking sheet. We knew that we were going to have to replace the vest, we just didn't expect to have to buy the additional vests. So we were budgeted for the replacement, but we weren't...
So the good adjustment to make would definitely be...
The miss was, the personnel turnover has caused some of these changes that are unpredictable.
The agreement can carry that from now on if we modify that, so if they do leave early, we'll get that money back, and we wouldn't get hit this way again. There's a way to adjust for us, I'm saying, so we don't get it again.
Right.
We're really trying to avoid budget overruns, we talked about that strongly in this budget year, because last year was horrendous for it.
When, but when, when I go before the finance committee and talk about the budget, we talk about potential academy costs, and we talk about the uniform costs, and they always say, "We're not going to budget you for what might happen, come back to us when it does happen." So to your point, so we'll...
So now it's just time to go back to them and...
Right.
Your, the account you set up can be used for that purpose at any time in the year with their approval.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so, that's the best, but again, the good news is, we found a funding source for the other 50% of the vests.
That's fantastic.
It should be free for us.
Exactly. We're just trying to figure out how to float it until it comes back.
Right, yeah. Portable radios. So I guess I'll discuss that a little bit when we get to the...
Exactly. We're just trying to figure out how to float it until it comes back.
Right, yeah. Uh, portable radios. So, I guess, um, I'll discuss that a little bit when we get to the, uh, to the, um, communications and dispatch, but I would just say that they're falling apart. Um, we have submitted a warrant request to Andrew for a replacement of our handguns. We, uh, so that's an eighteen-thousand-dollar item to use to replace the handguns, the clips, the holsters that go with them, and the light attachment that goes on the gun. Uh, it's actually a pretty good price for replacing all of our weapons. We currently have a six-hour forty caliber. It's been industry expectation under police use is twelve years, they're fourteen years old, um, so.
Just gonna ask how old they are, 'cause they should last a while.
We're, we're past that. Um, the, uh, weapon we're looking to get is a six-hour forty-five, and, uh, again, I think we, we've shopped around, and we got the best price, and so.
Why'd you wanna go to a forty-five away from the forty? That was the, um, big move a few years ago, to go to nines, and then up, back up to forties for a nine, but.
So, you know, they went away from the nine to the forty, because they're looking for stopping power, and they don't wanna overpenetrate. A nine would overpenetrate.
The forty was a little bigger, and it didn't penetrate us.
Right. And what I'm seeing, especially with what we face here, I mean, we don't go on many bank robbery calls, we go on a lot of wild animal, a lot of bear calls, and we're kind of away from our car, and we have forty-five, and we can't get a good shotgun. We have a, we've looked at the statistics for stopping power of forty-five against wildlife, especially a bear, and there are more success stories with the forty-five and fewer success stories with the forty. So, that's our, as far as the clip capacity, we lose a couple of bullets, but we're adding a clip to the.
Quite a few, quite a few, aren't you?
So, we carry two clips right now, so we'll be carrying three to, to make it an even mixture.
Is the forty-five a staggered clip or is it straight clip?
Straight clip.
So, you go eight rounds, seven rounds?
Yeah.
And the forty's gotta have twelve or fourteen, doesn't it?
Eleven.
That's all?
Yeah.
That's still, eh, eh, significant, but.
Yeah, so we're looking, we're, we're trying to match the weapon.
I hope no officer in this town has to use more than eight shots in any one engagement. If that happens.
You would hope, but if you had.
It's gonna be a whole new story.
I would imagine if you had a bear charging at you, your, uh, accuracy would go down quite a bit, and you may be expending them quickly.
Right.
It doesn't take long, it doesn't take long to squeeze that trigger eight times without thinking about it, it's a problem, if that's, if, if that was the case.
That's my bobcat.
You could, you could, you could expend eight rounds very quickly and find you're clicking on an empty chamber and you need to reload. It's hard to stay calm if there's a piece of wildlife that could kill you who's coming at you. It's, but, um, three rounds, not that big a difference.
Okay.
But the size of the round is, so.
Right.
And do you trade the old ones in?
Yes. So, they give us a cost, uh, for each gun.
What do they give us in trade-in? Any idea?
Two sixty-five per, uh, per gun.
That's it?
That's it.
Oof.
We'll, we'll, we'll come on that. We'll talk, we'll talk more about that, but.
Yeah, we can, I bet we could sell those and get better money for them.
Wouldn't miss a bid.
Well, literally, you can, but I, I, we'll talk about that.
We'll deal with a whole different.
We're gonna get a minimum of two sixty-five per gun.
Yeah, I, there's potential to talk to a gun dealer and see if you can get a better price for them, because they're gonna be legitimate and be able to sell them, possibly get more.
Reading our minds.
I would think, I would think we'd do much better than that. I'd, I'd buy them all at that price, you kidding me?
Reading our minds. So, um, so that's where we're at right now, so we put the warrant in with that as the, uh, the, uh, the price that they gave us is roughly eighteen thousand, so we put in eighteen thousand. Um, training, our SRO is in driver training right now. I've mentioned to you that, uh, more individually, that AAA just has agreed to, um, train him to be a driver's ed teacher. Now, why is that important? It started as the idea that when kids, when our kids and the kids at Quab in go to get their licenses, they go to a private school, and they have a class on OUI, impaired driving, and all of the traffic laws, but they're getting it from a civilian. So, we wanted to be able to offer it from the SRO, something that they could, you know, they could talk to him, they, they'd know him, and he could talk to them, uh, with a whole lot more, basically, knowledge. Uh, but in order to do that, and for them to get credit for it, he's gotta be certified in AAA graciously, because I've never heard this been done, they told me it's never been done in Massachusetts, and they don't know where it's been done, but they said that they would train him. And it costs a thousand dollars for the course. We have the two thousand dollar per year with the school, they paid for two thousand dollars for the training, so they repaid the thousand dollars for the school, and we'll be working on the overtime cost, because he's got a little, an awful lot of classes in Worcester. Three weeks' worth of the total classes, a week of class, a week of teaching, the class, and a week of teaching kids to drive. And then, we don't know where the school's gonna go with this, but it started with, kids have to take the class in order to get a parking permit on campus, which I thought was great. Now, they're talking about trying to actually bring the driver's ed program back to the school, which I think is even better.
Yeah.
So.
That's gonna create questions where the budget money goes, 'cause driver's ed is expensive, I'm sure they're not gonna do it for free for kids, when they're paying seven-hundred dollars for driver's ed course.
If the school can use it as a revenue source to help offset some of their costs, and I'm all supportive of them looking at that as an option.
I'm thinking of.
I mean, if you're paying a private company to train your kid.
Right, but if they're gonna pay and have the school resource officer, they should be paying the officer for that, and he's putting something back towards the officer's salary.
Well, he just mentioned they're already giving some funds towards us in certain respects.
When we get to the, to the part where we're talking about him teaching after-school and stuff, I'm sure that it's gonna be a conversation that they'll, will all be having, to make sure that, from my standpoint, being able to give these kids the opportunity to, to get a really good class.
And do it here in town is huge, instead of having to go out of town.
It is, I think it's, it is a win, it is a win. Um, the, uh, other SRO training issue is this summer, he comes up on a second round of, uh, you know, it's mandated that SROs continue to receive, uh, school safety training, so his second round of training is this August, it's called the Advanced SRO Class. It's in Massachusetts, and again, it's gonna be covered by the two thousand dollars, 'cause it'll be a new fiscal year, um, that the school has put aside. We, we, because our training budget is tight now, we're, we're coming to the end of the year, we're only doing mandated classes, uh, RS, which is First Responder Defensive Tactics, but we've done our training throughout the year, where everybody's good. Um, we've got a few online updates, we save a lot of money by doing our updates online. Um, so, we're good there. Um, we've just reached that point in the year where we've, we've been doing training, and now we're at the end of that budget.
What do you guys do for first responder training?
Well, we had, so it's, uh, it's an eight-hour day. We have, the, the instructor we bring in from North Brookfield, and it's basic, it's basic EMR, EMT, you know, a little step below.
Well, what I was, I was gonna say is, you should consider talking to Chief Rogowski, do a combined trainer of the fire department, 'cause they self-train. Well, they have qualified personnel, which would get instructor cost down in, in town, so.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do that, I'll look into that.
See, talk to them about it, 'cause we have to keep up with that all the time, so that's something they do on a regular basis, either different instructors and.
Might work out well that way.
Budget money's budget money.
Actually, they just trained me for CPR just a few weeks ago.
Well, it works into training nights for the fire department, so.
I now have my CPR card they emailed me, and technically certified.
Right. Training for the fire department.
Yeah, it's, we used to do with the ambulance sometimes, now they're part of it, so it's even easier, but, um.
By the way, that was a free training provided by the fire department from the heart, help, heart.
Heart safe.
Healthy hearts, heart-safe community program that.
The Lions.
The Lions Club worked very well, and the Masons?
The Masons.
And the Masons also worked very hard to get us into, and.
There should be a couple more courses coming.
So, I appreciate it very much, and like I said, I did take advantage of it, I know a couple other citizens were at the training I went to, and they're hoping for greater return the next time they advertise, so.
First responder's a little more involved in just the CPR, but.
It was very good. So, anybody interested, it was worth the three hours, it wasn't much, but they get into it, and you, you walk away learning something. It's not something like you just, oh, I saw a commercial, now I know the same thing I already know. You get trained. I had to put the plug in. It's worth it.
Okay, we've had, uh, in terms of, you know, we're doing it as a police department, we did have one major case, unfortunately, I can't tell you about it, we got an ongoing investigation, um, that you'll eventually hear about. And then, we had, just to point out, we had that car thief incident, where they, they got a stolen car, and all of that, that guy was sentenced. So, that, that ended up, uh, the right way. And, uh, he's in a Massachusetts correctional facility, and Connecticut's got extradition dreams, because they, we have them twelve outstanding felony warrants in Connecticut for similar stuff, and as a result of our efforts, and the efforts of Sergeant Maurodon, uh, we uncovered information regarding two car thefts in Connecticut that they had outstanding, so, you know, it was a, a good investigation, and the officers did a great job, and it's also nice when you get the call from the court that it's been settled, or he's been found guilty, and it's good. The Policeman's Ball, plug for that. We have, uh, at this, you know, so it's March eighth. Uh, just so you know, if you haven't read the flyers, it's, uh, it's a sit-down dinner, DJ, we have a photographer there. Happy hour, I think it starts at five, goes to eleven.
Okay.
Or six to eleven. At any rate, and, uh, we're doing, we're doing really well, uh, the donation for the tickets, we have a hundred tickets currently have been purchased, or donations have come in for a hundred tickets, so there's still time, so we're looking forward to that. Dispatch issues, getting back to the, uh, the radios. So, there's a current budget proposal for dispatch, and I'm sure you'll have questions when you, when you read it, um, but one of the big issues that we have is our portable radios, I believe the portable radios should be part of the dispatch budget. I think there should be a replacement schedule built in. We're, you know, we're supposed to have seen, I think we're seeing savings from Warren coming in as a department, and, you know, I've been asking for a, uh, replacement of three to four radios per year. We have twenty radios. We are sharing radios now, because the expense is on us when they break, uh, to fix them, and that's not as easy as it sounds, and I think we're, we're at dispatch, that's where the radios are, are controlled out of, and I think that it, if, if they, if they applied, what, eleven, twelve-hundred dollars per radio, for three to four radios per year, to keep us in a cycle, it would be the right way to do it, versus leaving it to the town to all of a sudden have to replace their radios, when in fact, it's all tied into the budget that we already pay. So, I just ask you to think about that as we go into their budget year.
I think the radios were part of the original agreement when they came in, and I don't know what, I don't know the agreement for the maintenance of them, but I think when the, when the switch-up was done to regional dispatch, the radios were part of that. Um, so I don't know if that means they're gonna own them.
I think we gotta look into it, because I have heard discrepancies between how we entered into Rutland Regional and how Warren has, specifically regarding that, as a, radios were not part of the agreement when we entered, but Warren came in and they offered new radios in order to bring Warren in.
I was pretty sure they were.
That's my understanding, that there was a difference.
Pretty sure they were part of our agreement, 'cause I know they went to, um, they came in waves, went to the police, and they went to the, um, supposed to go to fire, and I think somehow they got put in DPW trucks, something screwed up like that with them, but, with the vendor that did it, but.
Part of the five-year plan that they had, that they presented to us the other day, they showed, uh, radio replacements for all the member communities, and it was just a matter of whether or not towns were gonna be on board with funding the capital, the capital expenditure, and hoping, hoping that with the savings from part with, that that would be something they could add into the budget, so it sounds like something that they were already planning on doing.
Did they identify any details of that, similar to what he said? Is it like each town's gonna get twenty percent of their radios replaced every year, and every five years, we start over? Or did he even come close to what he would do?
I, I, I can't think of enough, it's on my head, I have it upstairs, though.
All right. Worthwhile conversation during the week.
Yeah, as we talk about that, then key to that is, there's a replacement schedule, but they remain the property of the town, because the town is ultimately paying the budget, and, you know, wanna be tied into.
Still our money funding them to make the purchase for us.
If some, if all of a sudden we have to switch dispatch, dispatch locations, we would be trapped by the fact that we have no radios, and all of a sudden, I have to be part of it, so, I think they should remain the property of the town that's paying into the budget.
Could, just, could we get a list of the total number of radios between all departments? I'm guessing that's that, fire, ambulance, police, and DPW.
And we could age them, I think the fire got them last. Age them all, they gotta be four or five years old now, right?
I don't know, they seem older than that to me, but we have four that are newer, and the rest of, seem to be older than that.
Okay. We had to change. I don't know, that's, I'm, I think we had a frequency change, we had to get new radios.
I know where the sum is, but I couldn't recall how that all got figured out. I remember being at the training, Bob had four radios, and he talked about so many channels from so many.
It's like, oh, the, the, the radios themselves, there's so many options.
Mostly due to the mutual aid, obviously, because you have different towns under different dispatch and different UHF versus.
Yeah, I wanna say we're on a high frequency now, instead of a low.
Right.
We're on UHF instead of EHF, we were the old, the old fire standard, but.
My last item is police headquarters. Uh, Andrew and I have talked about this, and about, uh, making sure that there's money at the end of the, things that we still need, we need the cameras to be installed, which we own, I think, we own all the cameras that we need. We need some type of a doorbell system, it's that simple, built into this, because people come to the door, and they can't get our, they, they call dispatch, but we just need, we need more of a direct system, and, um, and then we still have the smart board that needs to be purchased and installed and retrained. So, we've talked about that, about there being some existing money that might be available for that, but that's what we need to finish off the budget.
Have you looked at all a simple wireless doorbell, like from Abashad?
That's exactly what we.
They're like thirty bucks or fifty bucks, and.
We, uh, something like that, but we just wanna have it professionally installed, I'm sure we're buying one that'll last more than just a little while, but when we.
Well, they should all last, but the wireless one is pretty simple, it's just a battery outside and the, and the receiver inside.
I think that's what we're looking at, something simple, but we just need, you know, we figure by the end of this year, we should be in a position to put all that in, and then we'll finally have everything we need there. And we're still not using the cell the way we should use it, because we don't have the intercom and the camera, so.
Okay.
So, we're getting it.
Nothing I can do.
Used to do that.
And we're going to Stetson's.
Full-time.
We're going to Stetson's.
We may as well.
Yes.
It's, it's right here.
Okay. I have our protocol, but I'm not sure exactly what you were looking for.
Let's start with yours and then we'll figure out if there is one for Stetson.
Right, so basically we, we handle Stetson as a two officer call, that's our first security protocol. Merely because the presence of any stimuli can result in like a domino effect. And we've seen that whether it's an ambulance call or whether it's a broken light or who knows what. So we send two officers in, just because things can get out of hand and, and there can be issues. Like, because there's always a crowd there, we'll go to a fight, you know, there's definitely the, the chance of, of an excited group. So we send two officers, that's our first protocol. And then really after that, it's a matter of what we do with their elopements. And what we do is we send out two types of alerts. Staff is asked to send out a reverse nine-one-one as soon as we have an officer responding to an elopement. And we then will post on Facebook for those people that, we're trying to reach everybody, so we realize some people might get it through Facebook if they don't get through reverse nine-one-one. And that's with the basic information that we have, you know. If, if we have descriptions, obviously, time, if we have pertinent, like a direction and we'll put it in, you know, with, and please call us. Then when command staff is notified immediately, in any case, that Stetson elopement. And that's because we wanna be involved because they're all different, but it's one of those things we wanna know about, we wanna get the jump on. So that happens right away. And if there's an exposure concern, some reason why we think that they might, that they're really exposed to danger because of, say, the temperature or something like that, we ask for an ambulance, we put it on standby, going back to the other night in the snow. And that's, that's part of our protocol. And then when it's over with, we, we get a reverse nine-one-one out to let people know that the situation is resolved itself. We'll also put a notice out on Facebook, which we'll leave up for a few hours.
How, how was the timing for the triple elopement they had? For them notifying you versus these kids being gone? And how long do you think the kids were gone before they realized the kids were gone?
In this case, I, they told us it was twenty, twenty minutes to thirty minutes and I think, and we had two elopements in two nights. And I think that was pretty accurate. So I think they got to us within, you know, half an hour or so with the whole thing happening. We had, we didn't get any information that leads us to believe it was anything longer than that.
So twenty minutes from when the kids were gone or twenty minutes from they noticed?
All told, they noticed they were gone, they started looking. And thirty minutes from the time that they found out they were gone to the time that they called us.
You happy with that time?
Happier.
Seems, seems, seems they, they still do quite a bit in the time they're gone.
If you were up to me, they would call us as soon as they noticed.
And, and that's, that's what I'm looking for. I think it'd be smarter to, to get you guys involved sooner, so they don't have time to say, well, steal a car. Or break into someone's house or shed or, or we'll be the next town away. Certainly in that twenty to thirty minutes they spend looking before they call you, it makes me wonder, how often do they find kids in that twenty to thirty minutes? And maybe this is a question you could ask them. How often do they find kids in that first twenty minutes while they're looking versus?
Well, I have asked them and they say most of the time, you know, that most of the time they, it's, it's over with very quickly and they don't wanna bother us with everything.
But what's very quickly?
Yeah, like they find them just a little ways down the road, you know, still almost in eyesight. This is what they tell us.
Yeah. And I'm just, I'm concerned that maybe these kids are out way, way, way more than we know and they're finding them on campus most of the time.
And more than they know, you know, more than even they know. So, I mean, I wish, I agree with you, I wish that we would be notified, like that would be the first step.
I don't understand the resistance to, to maybe trying, of course, it's not the staff there, it's trying to set up some sort of better surveillance system for themselves to.
Yeah, I think the staff.
Try to keep an eye on them. I realize they're not locked down, but if they could have a way to know these kids have, you know, gotten out of a door. If they had an alarm in a door, so an alarm went off and that somebody at least knew to look, that a door opened, something as simple as that. I don't know how else we can reach out to them and get them to ask. But it would seem to me that if, if I had a kid getting out of my own house on a regular basis, I'd do something to put an alarm on my door so I'd have an audible notification when the doors open. And a way to keep track of, of my own kids.
When's Joe due back? Later this month?
Two weeks or so.
Okay. And nothing against Peter, who is, who we were referred to when Joe was out. But understanding Peter's not gonna be able to do much more than accept a message and then have to wait.
Pass it along.
Internally discuss, so it's not much worth doing until Joe comes back to see if there's any steps we could take on that. I'm gonna put it out there, there's a certain balance between call the police every time versus just being an increased burden for the police to show up. If they truly are finding people and bringing them back and no issue in town occurs, then why are you calling the police if they could be doing something else that's? There's a balance there, is all I'm saying. So just because they're not calling doesn't necessarily mean they're making the wrong decision. Some of the fines could just be, oh, we found him in the bathroom in the other building. It doesn't necessarily mean they even left property. There's a balance. And so I don't assume that every time they can't find somebody, the first thing they should do is call the police. I do believe there's, and twenty minutes is not a lot to ask about, do your first check first and then call. So if the truth is twenty minutes. But here's the thing that gets me, and I, it's still never been well answered from Stetson. We found out someone's been missing twenty minutes ago. That's not saying the last time we saw the person on site was twenty minutes ago. Means the last time we checked to see if everybody was here was twenty minutes ago, but we haven't seen that particular student for two hours. Who knows? I know that's not their procedure, their procedure apparently is every fifteen minutes they do bed checks, per the paper. Their paper, their procedure, their written procedure. So that would be something we wanna make sure they're clarifying in their communication. We last saw the student when, not when did we identify they weren't here? Cause it covers up a big gap of time depending on how they wanna answer that question. If you're not specific to, when was the last time you saw the student and can confirm they were on your campus? If that's not twenty minutes, then you're starting to get into bigger questions still that we need to work with Joe on to figure out why that's still happening.
But based on that, if they, if they realize this kid's been missing and we haven't seen him for two hours, that's a good time to say we should call the police first. And possibly.
But right, we won't have that data to stand on unless we can start pushing for the, when would, when did you last see the child?
And you possibly get a phone call, maybe like an alert, not like we need you here, someone's been missing. But letting you know, we are beginning a search on campus for somebody. We'll call you again if we don't find them in twenty minutes. And then at least the officers know to keep their eye open in case they see someone walking around. Not necessarily go look for it, but keep your eyes open. We're, we're doing a campus search now.
We don't know, that may happen twelve times a day that they have to. Going back to what we were talking about, to be a little more specific, I think that I would prefer to be notified once they realize that they're off campus. You know, not, so once they realize that they've left, that they're gone, doesn't necessarily mean that it's anything more than they're gonna walk down and walk the kid back. I just think it helps us to get the ball rolling, to know, well, we've, we've searched, we've looked, we now are certain that they're off campus. That's when we'd like to, and then of course they.
And I agree with that part. Once you know they're not on property, now's the time to pick up the phone.
I'm just wondering if, if they can be honest about, we haven't seen them in two hours, they should maybe make their call quicker, that's all I'm, I'm thinking there.
Time will tell on that one. So I don't wanna make a prediction based on past behavior, cause it does sound like they want to make things better in certain aspects. And I'll leave it at that.
There are certain steps they could definitely make, and I don't know why, I, I'm gonna have to talk to them.
I think we both agree there are some steps they can take, but it's steps they have to choose to take because we have no power currently in our position to make them do anything.
And I understand it's not a lockdown.
But the one thing I would, I would like to know is, have we had any progress? If I recall, Joe Allred had mentioned that he was gonna work towards giving you some type of acuity rating so that when they identify someone's out. Have we made progress on that?
No, they, it's tied up in their legal channels.
Okay.
I'm supposed to be meeting this week with a gentleman from Stetson to discuss what we're saying, well, okay, great, give us what you can give us. You know, we're not gonna go into all diagnoses.
What we, yeah, what we ask for isn't hipper protected, it's just generic.
Well, it, I think it's just not protected any more than any other youth-related offense issues that the police deal with. They still have to control the information presented in youth crimes. Like, you can't just publicly say this.
There are limitations, but we, we're asking for an email to us so that we don't have to respond there to pick up the information. And it could be just, it could be the most basic stuff. If we can't get that they're in criminal danger, if we, you know, if we.
Move medium-high risk is not a hard thing to say.
If we, if, we'd just like to have something, so what happens is that delays us because we have to send two officers over to Stetson to pick up the sheet that they used to give us, and we'd ask them for a face sheet, that's just a picture of the kid, then basically name and date of birth, nothing really more than that. We'd like that email to us, so as soon as they call us, they email to us. Now we have that and we can start our search rather than we send two officers to Stetson and we call other agencies to start the search for us and then we'll get the information to you and we'll get it.
Pick up some kid walking home from his school track.
Yeah. And we, it just delays us and we're, and I'm gonna talk to them about is, can we get, you know, not fax to the station, but email? Because any one of our officers can pick it up on a department email, look at it and go, okay, there's a picture of the kid, if they have one. This is the description of clothing and whatever little information they can give us, that would at least get us a head start, you know. And, and if we look at this strictly from the standpoint of the safety of the child or the young adult, it's still very important for us to have that, you know, in a snowstorm or, you know, it's two in the morning or anything.
Agreed. This is information that's between the police department who understands what type of information can and can't be made public. And Stetson, who understands what information can be made public or not. I mean, you both deal in understanding what you can and can't tell the world. There's no reason you couldn't both sit at the same table and say, we know our business, so share the information. We won't share it with the world outside of legal boundary. I mean, we know that if you gave it to us, we are held under the same restrictions as you are. You cannot then just because you got it, go give it, you're not WikiLeaks or whatever.
It's not a press release. And I think they are, they're trying to, you know, get that logjam moved because they, like I said, they have legal hurdles. But in the meantime, we're asking them to pare it down and then expand it as their legal team tells them they can.
Okay. So we gotta make progress on that, but it's, we just gotta keep working with it. I'm going to, if you guys are okay with it, when Joe gets back, try to give him a call. I did have a call with him a month and a half ago, just to catch up on stuff. I think it was a month and a half ago, beginning of January, I think, it was about the times. At that time, it sounded like the tension between the town and Stetson was kind of peaking. And that call made me feel like they understood that we could maybe still meet at the table, it hadn't completely broken and destroyed the bridge. I'd like to reach out and make sure we still maintain some type of bridge, otherwise we're going in the wrong direction. We're not gonna have a lot of legal backing. And yes, Sam, we have talked to lawyers about this and we have very little power. But anyway, Stanley had requested the floor, so I would like to get to him first.
Yes, just recently, there were four days in a row, a lot of kids had escaped. We had, they had them in front of my house. And counsellors. Do it four days in a row. And a lot of times the counsellors or whatever are right behind them, standing in the middle of the road. Almost getting hit by cars. And then I ended up calling the police. So if somebody on the street doesn't call the police, a lot of times we don't see the police. And the other thing is, the chief was mentioning about his budget with overtime and everything. How much of his budget is going towards Stetson home, making these calls, two guys, the ambulance, all that? You know, you know, they're getting the service and we're paying the bill. You know, that's, and I'm also concerned about the safety, you know, talking with some of the other neighbors. You know, that's, you know, having kids look in through your front window. And that's happened. You can't check the police log and, so that's happened more than once.
I've heard straight from people that have said that.
And places have been broke into. And because they're minors, they can't be in the police log and all that.
I've heard of fire departments, when you have an alarm system and you get a false alarm, that's okay. You get two or, or three in a certain timeframe and you get assessed a, a fine for having the vehicles out there for it. I wonder if there's something to do with town, if we looked into, you know, average calls per household in town, per residence. How many's a reasonable number of calls to have to someplace? And how many before a place is becoming a nuisance? And maybe we look into language in a, in a bylaw proposal that, that sets up and establishes acceptable. I mean, you can't do it with ambulance, ambulance bills on their own, it's got nothing to do with this. But repeated use of police and fire, certainly it's a limited asset to this town. And if we looked at the average number of visits for a police department per household, I bet it's less than one. You know, it's.
Said my house, I seem to be calling nine-one-one all the time now.
But it's, it's, it's quantifiable, in other words, it's quantifiable to say an average per, per household or where we do frequent houses, what's considered a often visited known household.
It's too subjective.
It's.
Because every call needs to be determined whether it was a viable, responsible call or is it due to the actual occupants of the house versus them being afraid of someone from another house.
And that can be.
So it becomes too subjective to write into a bylaw that I think has any strength.
If someone's, if someone's calling because of issues within their home going on in their home versus I see someone breaking into a car across the street, that's not a call. If you're calling for service for a problem inside a home, which you would say a domestic issue, you can certainly quantify domestic issues.
But would you say that somebody should have to, say, just for example, you're a parent, you have an unruly child, fourteen years old, we'll just say. And because of the, the laws in Massachusetts, that child starts getting violent with you, your only recourse is to call the police. Cause if you get violent back, it's likely you will be a child abuser, depending on how the story's written in court. So I know parents now who the first thing they do when their child starts getting like that is call the police. Because of that same legal advice they had received, right or wrong, they've received that legal advice. Now are they gonna have to call the, start paying the police every time they call after three times?
Yes.
No, they were legally advised to protect their legal right because of a situation in the way the state.
I would say yes.
And that's where I'm saying, no, it gets too subjective now. Each case is warranted separately, I would never suggest putting a bylaw in that says you charged someone because you called the police too often.
This is a business.
I, I've called.
But you can't write a bylaw separately in that regard. You can't divide up that group home versus. Or you're targeting specifics. I don't believe we could pass that.
It's not specifics, it's, it's.
But.
Just, just.
If you're interested though, I don't wanna say don't pursue it, I just wouldn't support it.
I'm interested and I'm gonna pursue it.
I just don't think, despite all we're saying, he's still only putting so many cops on the road because we're only giving him so much of a budget. His overtime is based on loss of manpower more than an officer had to stay two extra hours that night because he's dealing with a call. That does happen, I know it affects your budget, but I don't think it's an all-encompassing overall burden on your budget. Am I wrong?
You're right.
So I know that comes up a lot. What it really is, is is the officer available to do something else at that time? Cause we're not giving them a fourth officer during that shift because we can't afford it as a town. So if two do go there and it happens to be a shift with three officers, we only got one left to deal with the rest of the town. I understand that, but that's not necessarily a cost thing that we're gonna be able to calculate to say it's gonna affect how he runs his department by money-wise. It affects how he runs his department based on where he wants his personnel, cause he would rather them patrol in the streets or responding to other issues, I, I would've guessed. I don't wanna speak for you on that, but I think it's difficult when we start trying to say how much of a financial burden is Stetson on the town when the way we budget each of our public safety departments is based on personnel availability, not per call. So you can't really suggest their budget is going to change because what Stetson does or doesn't do. As a matter of fact, the ambulance budget might actually be able to go up because we charge for those calls and we actually get revenue from it. I'm just suggesting, it potentially, if you do the math, could actually be a benefit that we have that because we get more ambulance calls to help justify the budget. Police and fire is different, but police and fire are pretty much manned for other reasons than Stetson. Just Stetson takes up their time more often than we would like.
I think you're more likely to get leverage with the SRO concept. If they fund part of a position because we, the idea is you go there a lot.
Or fund training for a couple of police, that means that they're willing to say that officer's been trained. We're willing to provide more information to that officer about our children. If they'll provide the training, then they should be able to pick up the phone and say, yes, this person is such and such a class, such and such a, details, details. You do or do not want to approach this individual.
I'd rather hire an officer and put him there forty hours a week, you know, and treat it that way. To me, that's, we're gonna be there. You know, we, prevention is a big part of, of, you know, build a relationship, work with the kids, have a presence.
Do you know if they have their own security? Do they hire security?
They, I don't, I don't believe that they have anybody that calls security. I mean, they have a lot of staff that are taxed with, tasked with behavioral issues.
But you don't see the old security badge on an individual?
No, or security vehicles, and we don't speak with security personnel when we go there.
The only reason I ask is, the library in Worcester hires security just because of the people that come to the library. The senior center thinks they need a security personnel because all you old folks are getting violent. I mean, you're, you're getting grumpy and then you can't keep it to yourself. So anyway.
Who are you appointing?
The old people in the back row. But anyway, I'm bringing it up because if places like that think they need security, I don't understand why Stetson doesn't also have their own form of security that can be there very first. Your job is to patrol your own campus perimeter. Nobody gets past security and then faculty is doing their bed checks and that would ass. that would assist it if we can't convince them to help us fund your, your position. Well, fund your own position where you can pay the guy fifteen bucks an hour because that's what they like to pay security people.
It's like the schools that hire retired law enforcement to be their security.
It fits into the retirement, so it's not more than what they can earn or whatever. But I'm open to all those discussions. I think we need to start those discussions again and see if we can move forward. I think it would be worth, whenever Joe gets back, we reach out and see if he would be willing to come and talk to us. He said he would be willing to. He said he's not worried about this type of meeting. So we can start that type of conversation, see what he's willing to look at and what he's willing to do and what he thinks he's able to do. You know, again, we've gotta, we've gotta approach this with, let's find some common ground we can work together on. If we take it in a different direction, it just builds a bigger wall and we still make no, no traction. So I'm looking to see how we can move forward to help the town create a better, more safe community. Because right now, we do believe that the presence of Stetson and the elopements of the students at such a consistent level is affecting the safety of the community. Am I wrong?
Well, I'd love to have the same five minutes to, to spend on this that you just did, if I could, and explain my side of this. You explained very strongly your side and I think as a board, we should all be heard. Instead of cutting me off
No, you can't. No, you had rules. You get two minutes. I'm joking.
Five minutes, I think it's reasonable that I spend some
You did not have to be like that, Greg. You could've just asked, could I please speak?
It's, I tried and I was cut off. It was very frustrating.
You never asked for the floor.
We were having a conversation, I made an input on it.
You have the floor, Greg. Not yet. I just gave the floor to Greg.
I'll listen to a question first. She's been waiting. I've seen her hand up.
My whole question is,
Yes, Claire.
What is Stetson doing for us? They're not paying taxes. What are they doing for the town?
I'll tell you, this is what they'll tell you. They're the second largest employer in town? Quavon Regional being the biggest? I mean, you asked, what are they doing? I'm trying to find, there's your answer that I expect they would give.
But then I'm I'm a taxpayer. How many thousands of taxpayers have we got in this town? They're not getting anything from them, but yet we're paying for the services. I really think they should be billed services. They're not, we pay our taxes so we get those services.
You cannot set up service fees that don't apply across the board. So if you demand that they pay a service fee, then every company would have to do the same thing that works in this town.
They pay taxes.
You can't create a nonprofit specialty service fee.
I don't think, I, I don't think any other company in town would have a problem paying a service fee if they needed to call the police three more times. Uh, more than three times. I don't think so. And I think that, I know for a fact that fire departments do it in many places. You have a, especially, I dealt in security systems for a lot of years. Um, if you have a false alarm in a smoke detector system, they come out. When they come out, it's typically gonna be an engine in the ladder, they're gonna send a fire company out to prepare. You don't know if you have a fire or don't. Ninety-nine percent are false alarms. You go out a second time, they're gonna send you a bill. Maybe the, the, the first time they send you a bill, it might be a hundred, two hundred dollars. Second offense, third offense, you know, for the repeats, it goes up and you make a scale for that. I think it's reasonable to look at what we consider normal police services to other places and as, you know, I think it is quantifiable. Chief could certainly tell us how many times he's been there if you look back in his logs, how many man hours have been spent there. And we, we can quantify that to, to what we paid to have that officer, those officers, and a portion of money towards that vehicle. We've talked about patrolling the reservoir, the, the dam, and what it's worth per hour for our vehicle out there. We can quantify that and come up with a a reasonable expectation of what it's costing us to have them in this town. We've attempted discussions nicely to ask them, maybe they could fence in. I'm not saying lock the kids in, but I think if they'd fence their property and have a one gate at the front, they'd have one known entrance and exit. It'd be very easy to observe that and keep track of their kids. Um, and it's not necessarily Stetson, but the bigger corporation that's gonna approve these things. And it's, it's slow moving. It doesn't mean they're not gonna try this. I would like to see some reasonable effort made there before we move into a fee structure. But I am gonna look into the fee structure. I am gonna talk to our state rep and our state senator and see if there's some assistance in looking towards a structure like that, because I think it's reasonable. Um, and if there is, uh, money coming in from that, we could put another part-time officer on. Maybe there's certain hours that they're more prone to it, which is why, um, Chief Ogowski's looked for staffing. The fire departments are in certain hours of the day. Um, seven AM to five PM, everyone goes to work. Our call firefighters aren't around, so he wants to put a couple of full-time firefighter EMTs on to make sure we can staff all the ambulance calls. And he's targeting the hours that we need that help. And maybe Stetson has hours. This is the more studying to do. But I think it's reasonable to look to fee structures. I've heard a lot of complaints from people in town and on Facebook um, that are frustrated with this issue. And I think it's reasonable that we look into it further. I understand Mr. Ribbon is against that because he's, he's trying to keep things very amicable and, and have nice pleasant conversations with them, but we've been doing this for a year. And we haven't gotten anywhere with that. And I wanna be prepared to look into fees. If we can. Something as simple as giving the chief a red, yellow, green rating on a kid. It doesn't have to tell us anything about specific to the child, but it gives us officer safety and, and lets us know something about the individual looking for, which is always important if you're looking for anybody. What's, what are their habits? What are they like? What's their behavior? You know, what do you expect when you're looking for somebody? It's gonna help where you look for them and how you're gonna find them. It's, it's safer for the kids, it's safer for the community. And I think we're making reasonable requests in this. And I don't think that a fee structure is unreasonable. But not something we're gonna really discuss tonight, other than my idea of it. I need to get some numbers in and I need to talk to some other people about it. Some towns maybe that have fee structures for their fire and, and see how we can do it. And that's why I need to talk to the state rep and, and the state end and, and see if there is a way to make it for the police. Clearly, we can't for the ambulance. We don't need to. They, they, they charge for their visits for everybody. But I think if they're receiving even ten hours a month of our calls, that's a hundred and twenty hours a year, no one else in town is getting that many hours to their house of police service. And it takes away from patrolling our streets. I mean, ideally, we have the police officers to be there for car accidents. You know, it's a deterrent to crime if they're around and invisible. Um, help people for whatever, for directions or whatever somebody needs help with. We have the officers available to us. Every hour that they're there, they're not available to the town. And we're paying them to be available. So yes, it doesn't necessarily raise our costs or our budget to the police department, but it does take away from what we're paying for as a community. It's three minutes anyways, but I wanted a couple back on it.
Sam, you had a comment?
No, I think Greg brought it up pretty well, that maybe we need to ask the chief to, to make a monthly list and submit it to the selectmen of how much time, what kind of calls, how much time, and memorialize that regarding the dollars. What extra does it cost us to have Seven Hills around us? And how it affects our taxes? Because I'm sure that it affects the taxes, and I'm sure that it affects hearing people here, it affects the, uh, the people who live around the school. There are some people here that remember the Stetson School.
Bigger.
Children being entwined and involved in society in the town of Paris
Seem to be the painkiller.
One time. And, uh, there was a different class of people. And now, after hearing this gentleman who's not here, and it was Armin Jansen speak about him being a driver for some of the schoolchildren, the class of students there are significantly different than where we, being a town, are saddled by, uh, by, by their involvement. And I think we need to do something about it because it's one thing if this town was singing and dancing and our, and our budget was low and our taxes were low and we had a lot of growth, but we're not doing that. And gradually, I see taxes, as Armin Jansen mentioned, and other people mentioned, they gradually ramp up. And this is not the way to, to build a town. It's a way to destroy a town. So we have to preempt what's happening there.
Local government does not build a town. The town, the local government is not gonna build this town. It's not gonna fix your tax rate. It's gonna be you guys, the constituents. We're hamstrung by what you tell us to do or not to do. I mean, the reason we didn't pursue solar is for a year and a half, we were fighting about R eighty solar rights, because that's where town had viable solar options. So we couldn't act on that till we thought that the planning board was okay to move forward with other things. I mean, it comes down to what does the town want? And that's what we're trying to do. So you're not gonna really affect your tax rate until the townspeople say, how are we gonna bring in extra revenue? How are we gonna make it so that unused commercial or industrial properties are actually bringing in bigger things, creating bigger property and real estate tax values, so we get bigger revenues from what's already there? How, I mean, there's a variety of things, but I don't think what you're talking about is gonna put even the tiniest of a dent in our budget regarding Stetson. Even if they gave us the same thing that we get almost every year from Insight Meditation of about thirty thousand a year, how's that affect an eleven million dollar budget? And I don't mean it in, I mean, overall, when it comes to every taxpayer.
It's a lot better to be receiving than to giving. And we seem to be giving a lot.
All I'm suggesting is of the three thousand people, thirty thousand means everybody gets ten bucks back. Three thousand homes, five thousand people. Do you see that as significant in your life? And I'm not saying it's not significant, but in an entire year, you get ten dollars back.
You ask me a question?
Yeah.
Do I consider that to be significant? No, but I consider a regular, steady, expected ramping of of taxes to be detrimental to the growth of this town. And I know people who've, who've come here and who bought homes and they say that the, the property has been reassessed, increased regularly, yearly, or whatever the stages are, and the taxes have ramped up regularly. And this is what's causing so many houses to be, that's one of the causes, a lot of houses to be unsold and unoccupied and maybe foreclosed upon, upon, and as well as any, everything else. But you speak, is ten dollars gonna make a difference? No, ten dollars is gonna make, not make a difference, but repeated ten dollars is, is gonna make a significant difference and people feel it. And I know people in town who work for the town who have to take two jobs just to survive in this town. And, uh, I think we're not paying attention to some things and we're being affected by the Stetson School. Because, you know, I came home the other day and I heard the word several children eloped. Which is kind of an interesting word. When you think about, when you think about the eloping, you think that they're hand in hand and they're wanting to get married, et cetera, et cetera. So it's an interesting word that you guys use. But all these elopings cost us money. And I think that maybe I'd like this, the, the committee to make, have a motion to ask the chief to, to memorialize it on a list and quantify it and list the cost so that we know what it cost us every single month to maintain that property. And at least we'll have that information. Right now, we're just talking about it. We're just, we're just pontificating. And I think we can do better than that.
I believe, I believe they're working on those numbers.
Thanks.
Do you believe that's something you can track?
If I start today?
Whether it's in the office time as well, writing up reports, everything involved, how much time?
If I start today, I can track it. The software that we have going back to try to identify the, um, locations where we've spent the most time, it doesn't work that way. It does it by roads. South Street's got the high school on it as well, so I can go back and tell you how many times I went to Stetson. And I can start tracking exactly what you're asking, but to go back and look at the numbers, um, that would, that would be like, you know, page at a time.
Probably a lot of guesswork anyway.
But I can start the numbers now and six months from now, you'll have six months worth of numbers, sure.
Curiosity, in the last two weeks, could you tell me how many times you've been called for Stetson?
No, I can't. I can tell you
Ballpark?
Ballpark? Yeah, ballpark, we've been there? Five or six.
Five, so we'll say five. And they have about a hundred students?
Between eighty and a hundred.
How many times have you gone to the high school, junior high school, high school in the last two weeks for a call?
Well, we sent, we have someone there all
Other than the resource officer to call?
Times have we received a call?
Last, last, last two weeks.
Past two weeks, I'm trying to think of all the calls that we've had. Probably four.
Four? And there are, um, twelve hundred students?
Yep.
Um, so it's point three per hundred, it spells a five, so it's about a, you know, fifteen higher time rate that we're going to Stetson. Just rough quickly for that couple of week period. It's, it's significant change. We go there fifteen times more often per populace than we do to the high school. But that's my point of it.
Point we'll take.
Is there anywhere you can take someone to take a motion so we can get going on this? Because I know without motions, you guys go, don't move.
We're just finishing up the discussion so we can clarify the motions.
Oh, okay, good. Thanks.
Make a motion that the, we request the police chief to start tracking the time his department spends for Stetson related activities.
I'd second the motions, including vehicles and personnel.
How, regarding vehicles, could you clarify what you're asking?
If he sends two officers, it means two vehicles. If he sends one, it's one vehicle. So get an idea of allocated hours per vehicle and, and personnel. So I'd second the motion.
Okay. Red paper. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
We don't have anything more with chief right now, right?
Later.
Well, we've got new business. Do we need him there for that? First one, the addendum to the
Do you want to do that quick? Because it's just that one issue that you had.
Is that all? Because then we can let him go, I mean, that's why I'm asking if it's worth bringing it up.
Department's a planning board and something else.
Let's do that and then we can let you have the rest of your night. Is this consistent with the union agreement? Or is this step up? Same thing just applied to you?
It was in the original contract. For just some reason, it was missed and seconded.
Board of selectmen have any questions regarding, uh, including into the contract, the educational stipend, which is the same we provide for the officers, that actually worked for the chief?
Why is this addition being made? Obviously, with, it's a union agreement with the officers. Curious as to why we're modifying.
It was accidentally deleted from our last contract.
So it wasn't the contract that deleted it? That's why I was wondering, why do we suddenly jump in?
The one we signed somehow that got deleted out of the paragraph or something.
That's what I was asking. So, so everyone understands, we're not just deciding to start giving the chief an extra two thousand dollars a year. This was part of his original contract and it was accidentally omitted from the further signing of his, of his new contract. So it's amending the contract to, to what was supposed to read. Which is the original contract.
Good clarification.
Thank you. I'll make a motion. We, um, well, we don't have to make a motion for that, do we?
Yeah, it's a contractual thing.
I make a motion, we sign this contract addendum as we have it listed here.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Does it need more than me? Is that my name and title? Because there's two lines in the date.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, your name and title. Okay, yeah, so, yeah, your name and title.
We're reading, it's important for everyone to know why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Probably helps more than me.
Well, the next thing I'll see on Facebook is two thousand posts, why are you suddenly giving the chief two thousand more dollars? We're not. It's, I'll be there. This is like we had a warrant item at a town meeting, and we had to reopen, adjust it because we phrased something wrong, you know? From how it was read to how it was signed.
Usually that's a fun stuff, and it's like somebody, three months later catches it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience in going through all of this with us. Okay. Update on New Braintree Grade School closing. Just make sure I pull up the right. So, I don't know how much you, all of you on the listening may be aware, but Quavon School District School Committee started the process of removing New Braintree elementary-age students out of the New Braintree Elementary School to Ocann Elementary School. That required a couple of public hearings. Then it required a school committee vote, and then that vote gets forwarded under a certain timeline to New Braintree. And at that point, New Braintree has a certain timeline to schedule a special town meeting of which only that article is on the warrant regarding closing of the New Braintree Elementary School. We received a letter from New Braintree to the superintendent of the Quavon Regional School District to summarize it generally what, if I recall. The letter states that New Braintree believes that the regional school district and the school committee did not follow the school district agreement in the procedures and steps taken. Specifically, they did not provide results of their school committee vote within the seven calendared days in which the agreement requires. So they contested the vote and sent the letter back to the school district identifying that they contested. And this, from my understanding and further discussions after receiving the letter with different members of New Braintree, that this may require, at a minimum, the school committee to have a new vote taken, then record it and follow the procedure thereon, where they have seven days to notify New Braintree of the vote, and then the timeline starts again. Or, depending on legal counsel, it may require them to go all the way back to the beginning of the public hearing process and start all over. I don't know where that's going, but I'm just saying, this is generally what was brought up in this letter. I don't know if either of you guys have something more you'd like to add to this at the time.
Summarizes the letter very well.
So, in other words, no immediate action is going based on the efforts that have been made by the Quavon Regional School District School Committee to close the New Braintree Elementary School immediately. They may have to repeat some, if not all, of the steps they've taken to date to start the process again. I'll just state that I'm not in favor with closing any elementary school, because I believe it has a huge part of what the community is built on and who they are, and it affects the town's ability to quote-unquote recover the people they think they need in order to fill the elementary school. So I think it makes it harder for a town to rebound when you start closing down things like this, and eventually becomes bad for the region and the school district itself. But that's my personal opinion. I don't think the minor savings they're identifying, which is... Less than one percent. A hundred thousand dollars savings is what they projected at the meeting we went to on a thirty-four million dollar budget by closing an elementary school. I did not see that as a...
Less than one-third of one percent.
So there you go. So you're not talking about a significant benefit, it sounds like also there, where it's going to have a huge difference in how school programs are really funded based on the thirty-four million they're spending. The hundred thousand does not seem like it's significantly going to go towards something that will help create a better student experience. That's from me. I don't run schools. I recognize I'm coming from a different perspective. So that's where I'm at. I don't know if the other select boards want to even discuss it further, but it's something we received, so action is going to have to be revisited at some level.
We heard our meeting, was it in December with them?
Yeah.
And we had all five towns like boards there, and the overwhelming opinion of all five towns is nobody would want to see a school close. It's not our vote, it was New Braintree's vote, and as I understood, they were against it. Another effect of this is you may save a hundred thousand dollars a year out of their budget, but should there be a need to reopen that school in the future, you cannot do it. You'd have to meet the current building codes, and the school will not make it on current building codes, so you have to build a new school. And then we'd be talking millions of dollars to do so. It's a lot cheaper to keep the school current as a school, keep it on the books for a hundred thousand dollars, and keep it available as a school in the future. It's still relatively new school, just the building codes have changed enough that there's no way you could just re-adopt it and make it a school building again once it's let go. It would have to meet all the current standards to be called a school. So, building-wise, it's a lot cheaper to keep this on the books, even for ten years at a million dollars, than try to build a new school for, by then, four or five million dollars probably. I mean, nonsense. Yep, change of use. Once it's not a school, to make it, to make it into a school, you're not going to make it. Not to mention, I'm sure the town does functions there, they used to have little league there, I know they have basketball leagues there. There's a lot of use for that school as a town building, and I don't think the town itself would afford to keep it as a town building if they had to have it on their books. They'd probably sell it, or lease it out, and then the town itself and the community, all the towns around that go to basketball games there and little league games there, we'd all lose that. So there's a greater impact to the public than, than just the school itself, the education portion. That's, it's a central part of any town, I think, an elementary school, and I wouldn't want to see it closed.
Anyway, it's their call, as I understand it.
Who's the call?
The town of New Braintree can override the school committee anyway, put a vote to keep it, keep it at school. We just have to wait to see how it plays out.
As for our agreement, I believe any town that's going to have a school close has to agree to let it be closed.
Yeah, they do. It is their call, and I, I hear you there, Charlie, but because of the regional relationship and the various inter-municipal agreements we have, it will have an effect on us in some manner.
Yep.
More specifically, if it happens where no official school business can happen in that school, and it stays within the MSBA definition of QRSD, QR, Quavon Regional School District's campus, per se, all their sites they manage, and then the capital upgrades and the use of that building fall completely on New Braintree's town budget. And they're already talking that the place is supposed to needing a new roof. While it's under the school budget, they can work out the twenty-eighty percent MSBA funding and work through that. The minute they lose it as a school, it's completely New Braintree's burden, who is already sharing ambulance services with us, sharing police services with Hardwick, potentially, if not already, sharing a senior center with North Brookfield, or some similar services. So they're already having a hard time keeping their budget, because they're sharing with all their neighbors, with most of their stuff. You take this from them, and you're going to create, all of those regional agreements are going to even be more of a burden, and they're going to have a harder time meeting those as well. I just think it's... For me, it's not something you do to a neighbor. That's the best answer I got. Anyway, there's that. Any further discussion on that? Okay. Next item is also something from New Braintree. I'll read the letter, it's a quick little letter, and it's a recommendation for some of the Quavon Regional School District towns. Proposed Regional Select Board Alliance Committee. Dear respective Select Board members of Berry Hardware, Coberton, and Ocann, the New Braintree Select Board would like to know if you'd be interested in the formation of a committee that will consist of the five regional school district select boards. Following the recent activities around the QRSD school committee and administration, it became clear that there is little communication between the school committee and the member select boards. The New Braintree Select Board considers all five member towns as stakeholders and should be kept apprised in those matters. In addition, the formation of the proposed committee would not solely focus on the QRSD school committee. It would be an opportunity to open the lines of communication between the boards within the school district, which may lend itself to several positive possibilities, such as potential joint procurement, review existing, discuss potential inter-municipal agreements, sharing resources ideas, problem solving, sharing ideas. Perhaps the town has crossed a problem and solved it, and they can now share how they did it with other towns, et cetera. Select Board wants to get an idea of the level of interest of this type of committee before going forward with the process to establish. In addition, please feel free to reach out with any questions, suggestions, concerns, et cetera. You may contact Chairman Randy Walker at, he provides a phone number and an email address. And Teresa Kofsky, Town Administrator for New Braintree and Hardwick, can be reached at a number and a New Braintree email address also. What are your thoughts, gentlemen, on this recommendation or suggestion or request for information?
I think it's a good idea. I think we all know we've been out of touch with the schools as far as, I mean, the school committee is a voted body members by itself, and it would be nice to have the towns who fund it have some sort of collaborative to, to be on the same page, so to speak, when, especially when it comes to budgeting issues with the school. You know, each, each town individually may have an idea and a budget of what they think and what they want to ask for, but collectively, if the towns discussed it, we'd have a better chance. I mean, they're, they're dealing with the school committee and their budget and their side, going after us one at a time. I think it would be smart for the five towns to get together and, and, you know, look at the budget, look at procurements, and look at everything they're talking about. It's going to give us a better, a better chance of having some sort of input into their budget.
Yeah, I think it, it's fine, especially with the new superintendent, we move forward on something like this. We were doing it with the, and maybe Claire remembers it, with the joint finance committees and select boards were meeting periodically up at the school, and somewhere, somehow, that just kind of fell by the wayside. But maybe it's good to include finance committees and start the process over again.
All right. Then I think, would you want me to reach out to them and just copy you guys in response to the letter saying we're interested?
Right.
Let's discuss further?
And perhaps Charlie's suggestion that we include finance, a member of finance in the same committee and make it a larger committee. Because that's, that's our biggest impact for our budget is that school. And that's going to affect finance, it's going to affect the select boards on all five towns.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? Okay, let's move on to the new business items. I think we finally got through old business. All right. Well, this is what the rest of the world wants to hear all about. Warranted. First item, Castle Rock Agricultural Enterprises, Inc. Host community agreement proposal.
Long day for you all, thank you for having me.
Got it. I'd just like to state, so people know where it's coming from, why is it on the agenda, et cetera. We're all in the discussions about bylaws. Host community agreement was something that was given to the Board of Selectmen via the state. It was the state's choice to put it under the authority of the Board of Selectmen. When Castle Rock approached us, and the town administrator said they submitted a proposal and wanted to be on the agenda, I had asked for it to be on the agenda. I had also asked that we try to follow the host community agreement process that we had initially drafted in the marijuana general bylaw that we had on the floor at special town meeting this last year. That process included two public hearings, as well as including the planning board in the content of the host community agreement. What I would like to do is something very similar to that process, but what I'd rather suggest is the planning board would be invited to identify things that they would normally have put into their special permit granting authority, where there are certain subjective items that they wanted in their bylaw, so that that information could be presented to any particular developer at this stage of the process, rather than a developer having to spend money for state applications and provisional licenses before coming back to a town and having the town say, and now you have to do this. Where it's not clear in the bylaw what rights and responsibilities you may have, or what offsets you may have waived. I don't know how the other board members feel about that, so I'd like to hear from you before we get too far into this.
Obviously, it's our intent to move forward with the bylaws that we've outlined, and I think following those is a wise idea, although I think we'll modify them. I'm hoping to somewhat, we'll have that discussion again about the participation of the planning board. But I agree, if the planning board can be involved in the discussion, I'd rather see them be involved and have input on the host agreement. Not necessarily giving them the vote, is what I've discussed before, but having them involved in the host agreement and dropping their special permit aspect to theirs, because I really think that's setting two permits for, for them is unreasonable. So I would like to proceed the way you're suggesting, have the planning board come to a meeting on it, see what kind of input they'd like to have. And then you guys would know before you go to the state what's expected from the town, instead of, okay, we say yes, you have a host, we agree to work with you, then you go to the state, then they say, okay, you're all set, here's what you want to do, then you come back to the town, and the planning board says, wait a minute, let's not go too far until you do all these things. It streamlines, which is what we talked about several months ago, streamlining our permits, streamlining application processes, making sure things are listed online so people understand what the process will be. And this is one of those processes we already started to outline, so people would have an idea what to expect, so I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be my, I think, inviting the planning board in, having a discussion, making sure that we're all on the same page, so that they don't spin their wheels here and then go to the state and get something coming back. And I, I would think that would be the most expeditious for both us and you, I, I think.
And specifically, when we had, at the annual town meeting, we had presented a warrant article for, basically a grandfather clause that covered the one facility that's already approved. That wouldn't date back to this, so that covered, it's one and done. It was the only things that had already been agreed by that, so we do have to comply with the current rule. So we do have to comply with the current rules and we don't have any grandfathering ability just before anybody ever gets to that point. That was done from anything prior to that date, which really just covered them, but we had to say anything prior to that. We were concerned about the agreement we already had getting shut down by the new bylaws, which is why that was put through that way. But I don't anticipate any problem with this.
Yes, Sam?
What kind of business is this Castle Rock in and if they want to come there?
They'll present that in a moment. It's part of what this whole item is about, but I wanted to talk about more of our administrative side leading into it because I know that the town is interested in these processes. It's part of what the two bylaws have been trying to get passed in town meeting. So I figured we'd start with that discussion and then in a moment, we'll give them the floor to tell exactly what they're proposing to do in the town. You're welcome. I don't wanna speak for you at this point.
Matt was outlining our process that would be within our bylaw that we proposed.
So with that said, I would like to give you guys the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I know it's a long night for you guys. My name is Tom Egan. This is my attorney, Brian Falk, came to support me and answer any specifically legal questions about our proposal. I live on Walnut Hill Road. My wife and I bought the Pettisi property that was for sale for quite a while on Walnut Hill Road. We bought it three years ago. We have two young children, a nine-year-old boy and a six-year-old daughter. And we came from Worcester where I lived for 20 years. I'm an ER physician by training. That's how I ended up in Worcester. And I also worked in addiction medicine for the past eight years as well. So I do have an understanding of the concerns of people that are opposed to marijuana. I understand where they're coming from. But what we're proposing is to take a small piece of our land, and our land is 134 acres. It's mostly heavily wooded. We want to clear a small parcel. The total area that we would clear and secure would be five to eight acres deep out in the woods on which we would farm marijuana for wholesale to retailers. We are not at this point looking to be vertically integrated. We have absolutely no interest in being a retail presence in Barry. We want to grow marijuana for wholesale. Our vision... Tell you guys and ladies in the room, I think it's important that you guys understand who we are and why we're here in Barry. We did not come here to grow marijuana. I grew up in the city and for my whole life wanted space. My eight-year-old mother, who comes to visit us, laughs and looks around and says, "This is what you wanted since you were seven years old." And we looked at this property and we said, you know, we can find a way to bring it back to life and make it produce something and not just live here while I go work in the ER, but to actually live on the land and bring it back and make it do something. And we looked at a lot of things. We looked briefly at solar and discounted it very quickly because... Speaking only for us, on our land, we would have to wreck the land to do solar. And the family that owned the land before us, it was in their family for well over 100 years. And I think part of the reason they chose to sell it to us is because they believed us when we told them that, "No, we're not gonna clear this land and put mansions up on it. We want to live here. We value how we can raise our kids in this town. My kids go to Rubbles Lane. We're here." And I think that's one of the selling points for us to the town, to you gentlemen. We're gonna do this right because we live here. And if we do it wrong, if we cause problems, you can find me. You can come up to my front door and knock on my door and say, "What are you doing?" So we went through a lot of things and we realized that we had the right soil in the right place to farm marijuana and make a go of it. And we feel that we can be, not life-changing for the town, but a small benefit to the town. And if you choose to enter into negotiations with us, we'd love to have you come out and look around. And anybody can come out and look around and you will understand, once you're there, that you won't see it, you won't smell it, you won't hear it. It's not going to negatively impact the community. And why do we choose to come to you now? I'm very aware of the struggles to get the bylaws passed. I'm aware of the subcommittee's activities. And I think that us coming now actually can be a compliment, not a hindrance because we have absolutely pored over the proposed bylaws. And there's some small areas, I'll give you one example, it gets on the planning board's side. Outdoor growing, which is what we want to do, is legal, but it also says right in there that all growing has to be done indoors. We'd need to change that. But I think, you know, we know what the substance of your bylaws are going to be and we can work within those bylaws. You know, we started looking broadly and we said, "What does the town require?" The town is requiring 20 acres. Can't be seen from the road, can't impact the neighbors. Well, we can do it that way. We are lucky that we have the land and that we have good soil that used to be a field, deep out in the woods. And we can secure it. And I promise you that we will secure it because we live there. My wife and kids live on that land. I will secure the facility so that it will not be a risk, not only to my family, but not to anyone else in Barry. And I think that by coming now, from the town's side, maybe when the bylaws come up for a vote again, they really need to pass. Because if they don't pass, and I'm speaking for me, I'm not speaking for my attorney. I don't know if he agrees with me. But I've been in the back row for your meetings for months and I've heard you gentlemen express worry about this. If these bylaws don't get passed, marijuana is still legal in Barry and then we run the risk of being the wild, wild west. If we work together while the bylaws are being tweaked, the subcommittee is giving their input, maybe when it comes to a vote, you can say, "Look, we have a good family here who... We have a host community agreement. We have signed or we can sign and we can move forward." I've researched the whole industry for more than a year and I think my attorney will back me up when I say this. There's a lot of big money coming into Massachusetts from out of state venture capital people who are coming in and they don't care about Massachusetts. They don't care about Barry. I came here to live the rest of my life here. Over time, I've realized that I would like to grow marijuana on some of my land. Frankly, so that I can spend more time with my family. I've been an ER doc for 17 years. I've seen a lot. I can grow marijuana, make a living for my family and coach pop one. I can't do full-time ER and coach a football team for my kid. And it may sound kind of goofy, but that's really important to me and it plays a role in why I'm here. But my concern, if the bylaws don't pass, marijuana is still legal in Barry and I worry about these outside interests coming in and you end up with a situation like what happened in Charlton. I don't know if you're aware of that, but, you know, and I think that if you decide to work with me in the coming months, I'm not here to sabotage the subcommittee's work or the relationships that you're trying to build with the planning board. I'm gonna work with who you tell me to work with. You want me to talk to the planning board, I'll talk to the planning board whenever you want, on your terms and their terms. But if we do this together, I think that when the moratorium expires, Barry can say to the rest of the state, "We're in charge here." And you would have CPC Barry. I don't know the Ayandolis, never met them. Our business models are very different. They're not competitive. We're looking to do something very different. But I think the commonality is when more people want to do it than what Barry shows to the outside world is, look at the first two people, the first two entities that we license. They have solid connections to Barry. And I've only lived here a year, but I came here to live the rest of my life here. My kids love it here. My wife grew up in the country. For her, it's going home. And marijuana for us is a crop. It's a way to earn a living. It's a way to not develop the rest of our land and our forests. It needs work. We had a forestry plan done a couple of years ago. There's things we can do to make our woods healthier. Our neighbors hunt on our land and as far as I'm concerned, they always will. But there needs to be deer and turkey out there for them to shoot at. And, you know, I listened to tonight a lot of the budgetary stress that you guys talked about. I can't tell you exactly how much now, how much of a financial boom we will be to Barry, but we will absolutely happily make the maximum contributions allowed by law. Months ago, I saw, there were these articles in the news about marijuana entrepreneurs complaining that towns were extorting them for fire engines. Well, I talked to my wife and the one business partner that I have, who is one of my best friends that I've known for 35 years, and we were all joking, that we would say, "What color fire engine do you want?" You know? So, you know, I just wanted to take a few minutes to let you know who we are as people and why we want to do this. And give you my most heartfelt assurances that if you let us do this, we are here. We're not going anywhere. We live here. And we will be answerable and we will do it right. And I will work to address anyone's concerns that I need to. And I appreciate the whole room listening.
What sort of processing, if any, do you plan to do with marijuana? How, what form do you plan to sell it in?
Dry it and package it. No processing beyond that. We are not gonna be in the business of extracting oils or...
That's what I was asking about. Obviously, when it's growing and it's for wholesale, 3% maximum tax we are allowing, just you have in the agreement, is really... It's nice for the town, but it's also very restrictive. We can't spend it however we want. It can only be spent on issues related to this, to marijuana. So, and we could have 100 facilities like this.
Not how the law writes, just how it's been interpreted by many and mostly the marijuana developers are the ones trying to spread that rumor because they don't want you to be able to do more than the 3%. That's my perspective.
That's my concern. If we had 100 grow facilities and we can't spend the money on anything, it doesn't do us any good. That's what I'm worried about is...
I just wanted to chime in if I may. Brian Falk, representing Mr. Egan. In my other life, I actually do represent a lot of towns and cities as municipal attorney and every host agreement I've ever worn down, we've been very clear that the funds are spent at the town's discretion. There's not a limitation in the statute that they only, the funds may only be spent on impacts. That's how the fee is intended and that's how it's set in statute, but there's actually not a direct requirement of that the funds be spent only to mitigate the impacts of the property or the facility. You spend it how you choose.
I'd like to hear that. That's the one frustration with it.
Hasn't had to go to court yet to get it to interpretation, so who knows where we're gonna land on that?
I think you would agree. We actually tried to write it in that way to make it clear that...
Unfortunately, it's not as though it rewrites what the state will let us do and not do. Sooner or later, it's gonna get challenged and tried, but that would be certainly more beneficial. There's only so much we could spend on related issues for marijuana. But hopefully, hopefully it could be spent in other avenues. And obviously, I think the bylaws, even as they're being written, were allowing for outdoor grow despite the statement of had to be indoors. We did see they covered outdoor grow facilities. Limited numbers in town. Obviously, we don't want the whole town to be covered in solar, the whole town to be covered in marijuana. It's gonna be in a conscientious manner. I'm not opposed to this at this point at all.
Just to clarify, I don't know if you gentlemen have reviewed the proposed general bylaw? Okay, so you're familiar with the fact that host community agreement is one step, but when you go full circle, you come back to us for the license?
We know.
Okay. Good enough. Don't need to go any deeper because it's not a pass. Don't need to go any deeper because it's not a passed by law. I just want you to know that is still the intent.
From our perspective, from a business perspective too, I mean, you know, because we've, Brian and I, my wife, who is my biggest partner in every way, and the third person listed there, who I've known since college. One of our concerns was how you would perceive us coming now when the bylaws haven't been passed yet and the subcommittee is working. But I emphasize again that I probably know those proposed bylaws almost as well as you guys because I've just read them and read them and read them. And, you know, and please correct me if I'm wrong. The subcommittee's purpose is to tweak things so not to really change the intent or the true content of the bylaws. So the bylaws, as you and the planning board propose them, you know, except with those little tweaks like outdoor grows can't really be indoors and a couple of other things. Those are the laws that we expect to work under. And from our perspective, from a business perspective, if we come to you now and you choose to engage with us and we can work out a host community agreement, that may be the difference between being operational sometime in 2020 versus being operational sometime in 2021 if we wait another six months. We're not trying to be disrespectful of the ongoing process. We just believe that we can work within it. And maybe in the end, when things come up for a vote again, to, that we can be an asset to getting things passed.
Frankly, my thought was it was a wise choice to come now. And I'm surprised we haven't been indolent with requests to preempt the bylaws. Because things could seemingly get stickier when that occurs. So I think it's a smart business move to come now.
Thank you, sir.
I'm surprised we don't have more. And I'm surprised people aren't getting ready for retail applications because there's every reason to believe that the state may kick back our moratorium, being the second time with no effort to pass any laws by the town. They may not allow it. So I'm surprised we didn't have any, any applications come in for that, hoping that that gets kicked because there's nothing else to prevent that. Sign of it, except for a host agreement. I don't find it offensive. I find it just wise.
I can, we, I, that's, what you're concerned about is sort of, what some people would use the word strategizing. We're not doing that. We're transparent. I mean, there's, we're not going to play games with anyone. We want you to understand why we're here and why we're here now.
Okay. So, two things. One is this preliminary presentation. You need to kind of set up a schedule. We need to figure out the steps we would take to try to get to a point where we would vote on this. That includes working with the planning board. And it includes setting up two public hearings. I don't want to play the game with public hearings where we post them, but we do them within one week of each other. It'd be more like do a public hearing and then at a minimum, you've got two more weeks before the next. So each one can kind of follow its own two-week notification process rather than it seeming like we're just piggybacking it to expedite it. The intent was to make sure we don't go so fast that the town doesn't have a chance to hear about it and then have a chance to have a voice in the process. At least as I was recommending, the reasons we put that in there was for that reason. So I wouldn't want to say, "Hey, Andrew, could you post that we're going to have one on the twenty-second and one on the twenty-fourth?" Because I'm not trying to just get two public hearings and to say I met the bylaw that we discussed.
I think perception-wise, that has a lot to do with what happened in Charlton. And there's sentiment in Charlton that things were done super quickly, kind of under the cover of night.
They wanted to get the revenue.
Yeah. Again, for us, it's so important that we live here. My kids are happy here. I don't want anyone in this town to think that I've ever done anything underhand.
Well, the first facility, of course, was new to everybody. And partial select board to begin with. I came in late, had to catch up on it. And it, I think it was a lot lengthier process than it would be this time because it was very unfamiliar to everybody. So I don't see it taking as long as it has to. But certainly giving some time for the town to have input and understand what's going on. Don't want anyone in town to feel like we snuck it past them. I totally agree. But I don't think it's going to be as lengthy a process as it was last time. I shoot for a couple of weeks for the first...
Is March fourth and March eighteenth the next board? I'm not missing a holiday that throws us off. It looks like March fourth and March eighteenth are the next two board of selectmen normal Monday night meetings?
I think the eighteenth is President's Day.
In March?
No, I'm sorry.
Yesterday was President's Day.
Not Patriots' Day.
Oh, Patriots' Day is April.
April, okay. Yeah, never mind. I knew that one of those Mondays was going to be that.
I think March is that weird little window where there are holidays, but you don't get the day off.
So, yeah, Fourth of November.
I live in Suffolk County.
Oh, they get...
Evacuation Day?
March evacuation day, April each day.
All right.
If I could take just one more moment to... My neighbor in the back, Steve Clark, who came to support me and just say that we've started informally to talk to our neighbors in person. And we haven't talked to all of them yet. But Steve has known us for a year. And we've become pretty close. He's become a grandfather to my children. Both my wife and I, our dads passed away a long time ago. And to have the support of an older person who's spent his whole life in this town and he's willing to come here and support me, it means a lot to us. And so far, the neighbors that we've talked to have... Somebody sooner or later is going to say, "I don't want you to do this." But so far, everybody's been supportive. So we're in the process. We know that as part of the whole licensing process, somewhere down the line, it's not yet, but there's a formal process of notifying of butters. But I just, I want everyone in the room to know that we are starting to talk to our neighbors face-to-face and say, "This is something we want to do. How do you feel about it?" And so far, our neighbors have been supportive.
I think they'll be more supportive than just getting a random mail that says come to a hearing about marijuana next door. I think it's once again a wise way to proceed.
So I would like to ask, and I agree with what you're saying there. The fourth, the eighteenth, and then actually rolling into the first meeting of April? Because I don't think, we can't really put the fourth on because we don't have fourteen days between now and then for public hearing notice. But the fourth would be a good idea where maybe we can reach out to the planning board to see if the fourth or the fifth, which is really their meeting night, if I'm correct, Tuesday nights normally. One of those two days, they would like to meet with you, review, discuss your site and if, based on how you can generically lay out your plan, understanding it's really early to say concrete definition, this is what everything is.
Right, there are, I mean, there are a lot of things...
Work with them, get some input. But I would also like that we can determine if it's going to be on our meeting night or their meeting night, that we know. So the two different boards can plan to attend together if they would like to. We can go to their meeting if that's what they want, if Tuesday nights work for us, do they? Would March fifth or fourth work for either of you or not work for either of you?
I'm fine, yeah. Whatever works for either board, either, don't worry.
So, Andrew, do you mind initiating communication with the planning board to see if March fourth or fifth, they would like to have a meeting with the board of selectmen specifically regarding this host community agreement request?
Do they have this yet?
No. I can provide you guys with additional copies, bound copies, if you need them or if you just wanted to...
Might be good to get it to the board, the planning board prior so they have a chance to look it over before.
You get a clean digital copy.
Yeah, if there's that or anything electronic, you could email Andrew.
Well, we got these electronically, didn't we?
I unbound them in Scandem.
Right. So if it's possible, you could send him something, if you have it electronic.
Send it to you, sir?
Yep. So what I'm suggesting is the fourth or the fifth would be like a preliminary discussion with the planning board. It's going to probably be their feeling of the first time they see it.
I think we could hold the public hearing on the eighteenth.
We could.
That's the first one. But then we could have the second one.
But we've got to determine what the purpose of the public hearing is in our mind. Is it to actually say, "This is the agreement where we have in place and we want to tell the town what the agreement is and get some feedback and then give us another public hearing to see if we revised our negotiated agreement because of input?"
I would just say...
Or is it, "Hey, what do you think? Give us some input." And then we schedule the second one when we say, "Here's the final agreement."
I'd like to say we're having a public hearing on March eighteenth to entertain a proposed marijuana outdoor grow facility and invite the public to come have input and participate in that discussion. And we can do, let people talk about what they think of it and hear their concern before we move forward with getting further into the agreement. And then the next hearing, we could say, "Okay, we're going to bring a group, you know, have a public hearing, bring the agreement out, let people comment on the actual agreement." And possibly, I would say, sign it at a later date, obviously than that. But maybe have, I don't know, two or three weeks after that. You know, maybe push it into June.
Well, if we do a public hearing on the eighteenth and then we, if we think are in a position to do another one two weeks later, that'd be our first board of selectmen meeting in April. But that is putting a lot without another meeting in between for us to meet so we can actually discuss what the public hearing...
I'd rather push it off, skip a meeting and say June seventeenth for the second public meeting. That gives us a chance to discuss it at our meeting.
The second one would be April something.
I mean, April, yeah, I'm looking, I'm going down the...
I noticed, I was like, yes.
So let's say...
We're hiding behind the...
The first fifteenth, it'd be April fifteenth. Is that a holiday? That doesn't, maybe we have a tax, Patriots' Day. Ooh, so that's the one that's...
Twenty-second is Patriots' Day, right?
For some reason, we have a tax as a late mistake.
It's highlighted red on the calendar, so it looks like a holiday. But I think twenty-second is Patriots' Day.
Some reason our taxes aren't due on that day in Massachusetts. So do we just go off a week, push it out a week?
I'm trying to think it through just to, one, if everything goes smoothly, there's not a lot of revisits and needs for new meetings because of thoughts and various things. It does look like either the middle of or the end of April would be the closest we could sit here and make a vote on a negotiated agreement. Which probably means it's more likely going to be May sixth.
You could do the first.
The earliest. Because that gives us time to have a public hearing and then a meeting in between and then a public hearing and maybe a meeting in between, even if we've got to schedule it for that last week in April when we don't normally have one.
Yeah.
In that way, between now to May sixth, again, we can also not be just as trying to fast-track it like it's February. If May sixth, it happens, people should have time to get input.
If we did that by, you know, the first week in May was still only about two and a half months for the process, which is a heck of a lot quicker than we did last time. I think that's, hopefully that's reasonable. I think it's a reasonable amount of time to get the public input.
I have no complaints.
Now, you drafted the general bylaw with certain thoughts in your mind with public hearings and all that. Is what we discussed kind of in line with what you were thinking or...
Yeah, I'm just think, I mean, I think that if you're going to have two public hearings, you might as well not present the exact same thing at both of them, so...
So use one to gather input?
Yeah, I'm just, Mike, I'm just thinking about, you know, after the first one, getting that information together, processing it. Who's going to be doing the edits, review, and then, you know, going, going, taking a vote, saying this is the final, basically, this is the final one that we want to put in front of the public hearings. So that way, there's not additional amendments after the second public hearing. And then going, "Well, we're gonna, we've satisfied the two public hearings. We're not going to present it again."
So use the second public hearing as more of a presentation with the agreement.
This is the final agreement.
Right.
Yeah, all the more reason to have one or two meetings between to hash that out.
So I just, if it's okay, I just want to make sure I got my dates correct here. So we're looking at the fourth or fifth for combined planning board, board of selectmen meeting discussion about our proposal. Public hearing on the eighteenth of March. And then the second one in April, what date?
No, it's, we're talking end of April or early May.
It's either the twenty-second or twenty-third, depending on if it's a holiday. Would be our normal second board of selectmen meeting that month, right?
Because April four, not first.
Oh, no, no, that's the fifteenth.
First, then fifteenth.
I forgot the first landed on a Monday.
Yeah, fifteenth, we might not do, we might, we might skip that one and go out the next week to the twenty-second. And whether we do it...
And that would be us scheduling an extra meeting that month, which I'm not opposed to.
No, that would be taking the, skipping the fifteenth week and just going the next week after.
Oh, yeah, oh, I see what you're saying.
Skip the fifteenth.
Pushing one week out, okay.
We've got time. Because we still have another week in April, right? We still have the twenty-ninth. Be a lot of Mondays in April.
Let's just see. If we wanted to do that, then we would have to make sure... Okay, so the eighteenth would be the first one. We would have a meeting the first to discuss fallout per se of the eighteenth public hearing. So we can then, at that point, see how close we think we are to scheduling the second public hearing for later that month, the twenty-second. Or knowing we've got more work to do, so let's hold it and maybe schedule it.
I tend to think we might want to go on. I mean, I don't, I don't see us sitting down in one meeting because it's just part of one of our meetings. I can't see us sitting down on the first and getting this host agreement done for what we want it in one meeting to present. So we'll probably need the first and the twenty-second. And then do the first meeting in May to present it to the town for the second public. I think we'll need two meetings, two meetings to talk about. Because we're going to want to work on stuff, get a draft together, then tweak our draft, knowing how we always do things.
So March fourth and fifth would be our first joint meeting with the planning board. First public hearing is March eighteenth. Second public hearing, right now estimated for May sixth, based on the progress through April we make and finalize in the details of the host community agreement.
And you may, of course, come into either of our meetings on April first and twenty-second to listen to our discussion.
Yeah, as long as we think there's more, we'll keep letting you know. You're always welcome.
You can always come and sit. But we'll be discussing them hopefully at both those meetings.
So if you could also draft out that potential schedule and include that in to the invite for the planning board to either attend ours or ask if they want us to attend theirs? Due to it... Either way, I would recommend that we see if they don't mind using this room because it's a bigger room for the potential crowd that might come in then upstairs.
And it's...
Even if it's their meeting.
And it's on camera.
I don't mind sitting in the crowd and letting them run the meeting. I just... Hopefully, it is practice on a way that we can move forward and still work together on something like this. So to make sure that the planning board and those in the town feel like they need to make sure there's certain teeth to the bylaws. We can just work together to make sure that we're not asking you to do unnecessary effort to meet those needs.
If they feel that their special permit request is adequately met during this process, maybe they'd be more, you know, agreeable to removing it from their bylaw if they feel they get the say they want in this process. So I think it's a good thing to come up anyways. I'm confident that with the meeting together, that their concerns can be addressed in this host agreement.
I believe so, but we'll see what they think. I believe so, but we'll see what they think, cause it does come down to them judging people, not necessarily boards. Do you have any other questions or any thoughts you would like to express before we end the agenda item for the evening?
Just one question, sort of a logistical or procedural question. Are there any other things that you can think of right now in terms of specific questions you'd like me to be prepared to answer, or specific additional information you want me to have by a specific time? I, I think I have a clear understanding of where we're going. Other than that, I would just like to reiterate my invitation to you, your designees, anyone you think appropriate, to actually come out and look at the site and understand why we think it's a good spot to do it and.
Are you okay if Andrew shares your contact info with the planning board?
Absolutely.
So, if they want to, they could contact you any time between now and that meeting to do the same.
Absolutely.
That would be a good first step.
Most of my concerns always evolve, revolve around security, and I think the state also sets a pretty high standard on that, so I'm not worried about specific questions other than that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna be a chain link.
The state's gonna set up.
They had a picture.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, so, yeah.
Those are examples of, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not holding you, you're using this thing.
No, but just generally speaking, we're looking at like prison, military grade, no cut, no climb.
It's not gonna be a short fence either way, cause if you're talking about deer, you won't have a crop.
For an Irish draft horse, which cost me $15,000.
Wow.
And someone asked in the committee, well, how do we, we should make a regulation and say they have to have a fence and have to do this, and someone else is wise enough to say, I think if he spent that kind of money on a horse, he's not gonna let it get loose.
Yeah, exactly.
It's the same sort of thing, I certainly.
That's a fabulous analogy.
I wasn't gonna let it run loose.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a valuable crop.
So, rather than make another regulation and everything else, it's, it, certain things, you know, common sense does take over.
If I can just add, Tom doesn't live there, I actually went out to the site with Tom, so I wanna get a sense of it myself. You get out there, even on the perimeter, the edge of where he's looking to grow, and I challenge you to see anything remotely approaching a neighbor in any direction that you look. I mean, this is, this is so deep within his sight. You drive past this property in the road, you're not even seeing the trees that are gonna be near where the fence is going to be. And this is deep in the woods.
This is the perfect time of the season to get that look, because you don't have the underbrush growth.
Yeah.
So, you'll see that it's, all of that, all the twigs and little trees are just so thick between you and a thousand feet between the next whatever, so.
Well, the process is set, we'll see how it goes. Thank you all very much.
Much appreciated, and thank you for coming before the board with the request.
Do you have any agricultural experience?
Um, no, sir, but I didn't have any experience when I went to medical school either.
I just wanted to make this quick learning. I just didn't know if you, you were a tomato farmer at one time or.
No, but what, what we plan to do, and, and again, we're months and months and months away, you know, we're going to spend some time identifying botanists and professional growers who know how to do this, and we're gonna bring them in, but other than that level of staffing, that's another thing. We, we expect to hire, we expect to have employees and we, you know, it's gonna evolve, we're not sure exactly how it's gonna go, but we expect to have employees and we want those employees to be people who live in Barry. And we want them, we want, we're not gonna pay them $15 an hour. We wanna hire people in Barry and, you know, some of our goals revolve around how three years from now we wanna be perceived. We want like people, the, the people that work for us to say, wow, they're great people to work for, this is a great job to have, you know, we, they, they pay us a good wage, they try to give us benefits, and we can live on this. And, you know, one of the ways, and I say this to my wife all the time, if in a couple years, like, other people come and say to you guys, we wanna grow outdoors in Barry, I will have succeeded if you say to that person, go see what Egan's doing, if you can do that, we'll talk to you. You know, we, we, we wanna do it right, and we can't give everybody in town jobs, but we can give some people in town jobs, and sir, I've heard you say in multiple meetings talking about, what are you, what are we gonna do to build Barry up, you know, and it can't all be about raising taxes. I listen to what you say, I sit in the back, and my operation isn't gonna single-handedly do that for Barry, but, you know, when other people come in, and I'm not talking about marijuana, other people come in to do other things, that's how it gets done, and I'm, I plan to live here the rest of my life, so I'm hoping I can contribute, and I've taken up a lot of your time, and it's been a long night, and I, and I, I thank you all for listening.
I appreciate it, and it's a, it's a good start, so we should be seeing you in, I'm losing myself, two weeks.
Very good.
Fourth or the 5th, we'll, we'll figure that out. Once Andrew gets confirmation, we'll make sure to reach out to you and bring us all under the same thing, and hopefully we'll have that answer before the end of the week, if not early next week.
And I will work on getting you an electronic copy of this. I will work really hard on it, but I have to say the next three days, I'm 12 hours, 12 hours, 12 hours in the year.
I'll send this out as a preliminary anyway, so they have the information.
I'll get you a clean copy.
All right, cool.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time, sir.
Have a good night, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Have a good night, Tom.
How are you doing? How are you doing?
Good. Great.
Under three acres. Does section come correct?
Yeah, 2.6 something, I think.
2.66.
We have recommendations from the planning board and the conservation committee not to exercise the first right of refusal option, from what I understand, is we have to just do that first before they can decide the back taxes, and the back taxes can be paid and then it can be released. If I've got the process right?
An estimate on the back taxes?
Um, I don't.
I believe, what is it, 60% savings, and you gotta pay back five years, so.
Five years.
Whatever three years the taxes would be, but I don't know what it is on open land. Offhand? But we wouldn't, we wouldn't release it until the taxes are paid, and that won't be paid, won't be billed until we refuse the first right.
Has this already been split in separate parcels? A portion of the above referenced parcel.
Yeah, lot, lot A would be a split from the original.
So, we'd have to find out if this is one plot now, if they're trying, if they're gonna subdivide, I think they have to take the whole thing out of 61A, don't they?
The subdivision plant was back in 1999, so I would assume that that was probably, it's already probably been.
I don't wanna assume. You may, you may have a subdivision plant there, but I don't know if you can take farmland out of protection piece by piece. I think whatever the parcel was, it has to come out of farm protection.
You can take it out, but I think if you, the stuff remaining in has to be five acres, right?
Right.
You can take out two acres, like, if you wanna give a lot to your.
Oh, I thought it had to already be broken down, you could take out lots.
Doesn't have to be.
Back taxes paid the entire piece.
The remaining acreage.
The remaining parcel, it has to be at least five acres.
It's 8.664.
What?
8.664 acres is the remaining.
Split into two sections.
So, they're taking 2.66 out.
I see it now, yeah.
8.664 is remaining.
Yeah, I see it. I see it. Anyway, I'll make a motion, we, we have the right of first refusal.
So, if they took. Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. So, if they took the larger portion out and only left 2. something, it gives, they'd have to pay the back tax of the whole thing.
Right. And the portions, they key for wetland.
Who's, who wrote that in there, the typo?
I did.
Should we leave, initial that or?
I'll, I'll initial that.
Yeah, just, just so before we sign it, it's.
Well, that's on our package, that's his paperwork.
Right, that's for us to sign, right. We voted it, right? We voted it. And this is the 16th, what's the date today?
19th.
19th, wow, I'm, I'm really close.
This is the fourth annual?
Um.
Yep.
It's four, three, four.
I know I forgot to print.
Catch up on the numbers.
I know I forgot to print out the online stuff, but all the departments involved in this did sign, did appropriately sign off.
Excellent.
Yeah, she did it, she did the application and she did it online also. She did it both ways.
Yeah, all the departments signed off on it online.
Online, yeah.
Forgot to print that, that sheet. They say we're try, still trying to figure out that part to print off the comments.
All right, we gotta stick one of these up in the town.
April 27th, and you said everybody, all the applicable departments have signed off?
Yes.
Do you guys have any questions?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
Well, I will make one comment. Normally, the Fire Department Association does cook food down there as a fundraiser for the association. Doesn't benefit me myself, but I usually go down and help cook for that, so just make an acknowledgement of that, that I do go down there for the association to help them raise
Make your motion to accept the special event permit request by Greg's Restoration's fourth car show in Swap Meet Saturday, April 27, 2019, at Felton Field.
I will abstain to be extremely technical.
Are you making money on it? Directly?
No, but given.
That's fine, I was just.
No, I don't wanna make any money on it, but I will abstain.
And call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded that? Who seconded that?
I did. Wait, Charlie made the second.
Charlie seconded.
Second, I made the motion, Charlie seconded. Charlie and I voted yes, and Greg abstained. So, Joel Cranston has submitted an application to be appointed to the Cemetery Commission to replace, forget her name. Why am I?
No, you're thinking, you're thinking the 9/11, you're thinking Colleen, huh?
No, no, they, I can picture her, that's the problem.
The cemetery?
Yeah, only because I recall her coming to some meetings, whether it was Finance or DPW. She came to a meeting almost a year ago when she said, take my people and just let Parks manage them, and then we moved the budget accordingly at the same time. But anyway, so I can picture her, and I feel terrible that I cannot properly reference, cause I'm terrible with names. So.
Oh, I know you.
Anyway, anybody have any comments, discussions, wanna make a motion regarding Joel Cranston's application?
I'll make a motion if we point Joel to the Cemetery Board Commission.
We know, is this a, these normally elected positions, is this open or is it a?
I think cemetery is appointed.
Strictly appointed, okay. I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. Joel, you have been appointed, thank you for applying. Have you had a chance to review the Wachusett Greenways support letter? Apparently, the Wachusett Greenways is sending a letter, or has drafted a letter for us to send to Congressman Jim McGovern.
It's actually a few different representatives, I just include the one to Jim McGovern, it's the same wording, but they asked for one to Amanda Lewis at COT, at DCR, Senator Goby, Representative Berthium, and Congressman McGovern. I'm going to redraft the one for Representative Berthium, cause I forgot to write the word representative before Donald Berthium, so.
Well, I know that we recently were able to fit into the budget the $1,000 donation to the Wachusett Greenways that helps them pay for porta potties during the season. But by doing that, it also means that they were able to work towards putting up their $33,000 portion of matching funds to get actually much higher, significantly higher...
Grant.
Grant. So the grant would be approximately $126,000 in the request with matching Wachusett Greenways funds of $33,500, for a total of about $160,000. And it looks like, if I'm reading this right, this will help... Does this help connect Sterling to West Boylston by cutting through Holden?
I don't know. It says Holden to Princeton, so yeah, that's probably connecting Sterling in, if it's Princeton, it's closest to Sterling. But it's 1.9 new miles.
So by doing that, right now, the trail technically ends in Barry, this portion of the trail they're referring to. And this bridge will continue to help anyone from Holden, West Boylston, et cetera, that likes to walk or bike paths, things like that, actually come to Barry through different means and methods, but it does add to that. So...
These rail trails actually get a lot of use. I don't know if you go out on weekends by any towns that have them, where they cross public roads, and they're actually very busy. A lot of people do use them and utilize them. So of course, we support them, we have supported them, and I think we should sign this letter and show the support.
Any thoughts or comments, Charlie?
Any thoughts or comments on it?
Looks fine, Dave.
I make a motion that we agree to this. Is there, do they want us to send a letter to how many people?
Just four. I have them all written down here.
All four?
Yeah.
Okay.
They get three from the fourth one. I just realized I addressed wrong, so...
Ranges from local to state to federal, or just state and federal?
Yeah, state and federal.
Okay.
Yeah, they just said to send it to your representatives, so, I mean, they listed like 10 different ones, but I'm sure that Worcester representative doesn't, won't care too much about getting five different letters.
Barry, the town might not care if Barry is supporting that or not.
Yeah.
I'd say second the motion to...
Approve, sign, and send the letters to the four representatives Andrew referenced. Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Oh, you got the ones with the actual colored?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I forgot to write Representative Donald Berthew. It says Donald Berthew. A little bit more...
He's close, though. He's open with that. He's a little less formal. You can call me Donnie if you want.
Yeah, I'll strike it.
Unless it's in front of the governor.
Just scribble it out and write it. Or we can just stop in and sign that later.
Yeah, no problem.
We're gonna show proper respect.
Okay. Done. Now, with all of that said, correspondence, we really have nothing specific to speak of right now. We received some things, but none of them were really, these things you're looking at are not correspondence. These are personnel reviews that I am working with the town administrator to gather from various department heads regarding town administrators' job performance. And then when we gather them all, we'll set up a meeting with the rest of the board, and you can review any comments people have gotten, and then we can sit with Andrew and talk about any of that that may have come up. For all of you in the public, that will be completely executive session. You'll probably never hear a word about it, because it is individual job performance stuff that normally does not go public. I don't mean that negatively, I just figured I'd put it out there. Speaking of which, do you have anything town administrator report-wise bringing up that wasn't really captured in the agenda?
Not too much. I just have provided you guys this letter of thanks I wanted to send to Insight Meditation for their annual pilot payment. So I don't know if you wanted to sign that. Other than that, it's been plugging away yet.
What's this?
That was from the town of Hubbardston.
Anything we have to do with that?
Basically, they just affirmed where their property bounds are.
So nothing we need to do with it?
No, just notification.
And I assume we're not getting into this topic again.
Who's Lee Rutland that wants to...
Correct. I would take that into consideration when we take the next agenda.
Really, I just wanted to provide that for your information. She did stop in today to provide that letter, but said that she didn't wanna be on the agenda for tonight, because she'd rather talk to her neighbors and have her neighbors come. So if you guys wanna not talk about it at the next meeting, but at a future meeting, let me know, and I can get back to her, just to let her know that we've taken it under consideration, but...
We had...
I do think I'd rather wait till we've actually confirmed with Joe Alred that he's back, and we can start the conversation with him, and then hopefully be able to create a better dialogue after that.
Okay.
Because I do hope we can create dialogue on this and promote some positive action.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve signing and sending a thank you letter for...
Insight meditation?
As presented.
I second that motion. Any discussion?
Nope. Should we read it?
Yes. Would you like to?
Sure. Dear neighbors, on our behalf of the town of Barry, please accept this letter for thanks for your joint voluntary contribution of $29,000 as payment in lieu of taxes for fiscal year 19. In these difficult times, when town departments struggle to make ends meet, your generous donation is one more illustration of your organization's commitment to this community. Your actions exemplify a cooperative spirit that makes Barry a special place. Thank you again for your support, and please feel free to contact us if you need any assistance. Sincerely, and signed by the board members.
Well written. Thank you. Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I overdid it.
That's a good one. I may not have done it on the record, I just...
With that, for all others out there, I'll make a motion that we move into executive session for MGL Chapter 30A exemption, Section 21A exemption to discuss strategy with respect to the town administrator. We will then, after completion of that, leave executive session, re-enter executive session as per MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A exemption to, to discuss strategy with respect to the fire chief. Then we will leave the executive session, and at that point, we will adjourn the open session with no further action to occur this evening.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Call for vote?
Well, Sullivan, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
In favor.
All right, let's lock up the building. Don't let anybody out, don't let anybody in. Much appreciated, and thank you for...